May we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Harrah.
Here.
Councilmember Way.
Here.
Councilmember Chu.
Here.
Vice Mayor Morrison.
Here.
And Mayor Hillmer.
Here. Would you please rise if you are able and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For this special meeting, we have two business items. The first one, our fiscal year 2016-17 audit of the city's basic financial statements. May we please have a staff report?
Mr. Mayor, perhaps we should take these out of order. I don't think our auditor's arrived yet. He may be challenged with traffic.
All right. What would you advise?
I would suggest we switch the order of the two items on the special meeting agenda.
Go to the item 2.2?
Yes.
All right. We'll do so. Item 2.2 is the actuarial valuation as of July 1, 2015, of other post-employment benefits and programs. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. So, the city of Larkspur is required by the Government Accounting Standards Board to periodically calculate its liability with respect to OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefits. For Larkspur, that's essentially the benefit we've promised employees of medical coverage in retirement if they've vested to that benefit. For the benefit of the public who's not monitored Larkspur situation for a while, the bulk of the OPEB liability reflects benefits offered in the past, which was to long-term employees they would vest to, coverage for themselves and/or their spouse in retirement. We no longer do offer those benefits, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a moment. So, the bulk of what you're seeing in the OPEB liability reflects the current retiree base and the remaining employees who were hired and offered that benefit as part of their employment. The report, under GASP requirements, is necessary every three years. However, we joined CalPERS for putting money into a trust to start to fund our OPEB liability, and that trust requires that we do the calculation every two years. So going forward, we'll be doing this calculation for you every two years. The hard thing, I think, for folks who read the study that I want to point out is the baseline year is actually back a couple fiscal years, and then they use a model to actuarially project out the amounts of money that ought to be set aside in the coming years, and that's how this process works. So even though we say we're calculating it every few years, the hard numbers are a few years back, and that's the standard methodology that these actuaries use. I'd like to take you through a few slides that Kathy, who are in the finance directors here, helped create so that we could sort of summarize what is in the lengthy report, and then we will open ourselves up to questions. So, OPEB liability is effectively a snapshot of the amount of money that ought to be in the bank today or a trust today to fund the benefit that's been promised to employees in retirement. The liability exists if you have not been funding that amount so that you haven't covered that benefit. There are very few public entities in California that don't bear some OPEB liability. There certainly are a few, but most public employers in the state of California have some amount of liability where they've had their retiree medical program underfunded. Larkspur's liability has started to smooth out, meaning that it's not growing as rapidly, and that's because you a few years ago changed the practice of the benefit that you're offering. And so, earlier employees and current retirees have what's called a defined benefit, meaning you said that you would cover premiums for them in retirement. Today, for newer members, we have a blended benefit, which is a baseline-defined benefit, a minimum amount, which today, I believe, is $133 per month to the retiree, and then they have to pay the difference going forward. For new hires that are hired under that program, the blended is because we have a defined contribution. We actually take some money and we put it into retiree health savings investment vehicle for them, and if they work with Larkspur long enough to vest, they get to take that amount of money and use it to cover that remaining part of the premiums that they would otherwise incur. However, our retirees that we already have and some of our active employee base are still on the defined benefits program, and so a lot of OPEB liability reflects what they were promised. I think generally, you're going to start to see the growth in your OPEB liability be primarily reflective of inflation on medical costs because you've smoothed out that growth in what's being promised to folks. And over time, you'll have that pool of folks who are on a defined benefit program start to diminish, and you'll have that number of folks on the blended rate go up. So, in combination with us paying down our liability, you'll start to see that number shrink. So what does our OPEB liability look like? Do we have an overall slide?
Mr. City Manager, Councilmember Way has a question.
Can you, what is the years of service that are before people are vested in the new formula?
In the last, in the last year that we offered it, the last year that we offered a defined benefit, it was 10 years to vest to your own, coverage for yourself, and 15 for you and your spouse.
And what about for the new blended? Or is there no?
So, under the PAMCA law, that's a state law that we're using to provide the blended, they vest to it in five years of retirement. After five years of working, they vest to that benefit, provided they retire from the agency that they worked for for those five years. So, to really make that benefit work for somebody, though, they would want that retiree health savings account to grow to offset the premium cost.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. What's the bottom line on the OPEB liability right now? Can you give me that number? I don't have it off the top of my head. Where are you pulling? Oh, net, okay. So, are you on page 17? Sorry, I wasn't quite ready to have this be the first item either. Excuse me. So Kathy's looking up what our, the report has come up with as our current OPEB liability. I'll jump ahead to what we wanted to do, which is sort of give you the ability, and the public the ability, to understand what we're doing about it and match it to what you're reading in the paper or what you're hearing from other agencies. 4.4. So our current liability today is 4.4 million. And that's our total amount we ought to have in the bank to have set aside to fund our obligation. What you hear a lot of folks talk about is the ARC, the Annual Required Contribution that we ought to be making, and I think probably for most folks, that's what they ask you about. That's what they ask me about. Are you meeting your ARC? Are you making your annual payment that you ought to be to catch up? The ARC consists of several different components, and we're going to talk about that in a little bit. But what we have on this slide here is to show you what we paid in the last fiscal year and what the ARC was for that fiscal year. So on the left, you have what we actually paid, which was almost $900,000. And what you see on the right is that our ARC for that year was about $1.17 million. So, we didn't meet our ARC, but we are slowly working our way toward doing that. And the council will recall, when we first started addressing OPEB, you put us on a five-year plan to get up to where we're funding approximately our ARC. We're in the third year of that, so this progress is what we expected, that we wouldn't be all the way to funding our ARC just yet. So now, if you take us forward. Oh, sorry.
I just want to clarify that. We're looking at the implicit, which would be the account for all intensive purposes, would be what we'd use for accounting purposes and what would hit our books. There's two different, we have implicit and the explicit, and so this would be for the accounting purposes, and then so is the 4.4 that I mentioned. It's, I don't know if I can even explain the implicit in this, but I wanted to make a point out that we're looking at not necessarily what we would have, we would be funding for today, but what we would be recording on our books. So it would be for the employees that would be, that could possibly be getting retiree medical before the age of 65 for Medicare. Am I explaining that?
Let's wait, Kathy. We have a slide on this, so I think we're right on the implicit.
Well, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So.
So let's, let's go ahead and move on to the next. Let's move on to the next slide.
This is the next slide.
Oh, sorry. It looks so much similar to last. I'm sorry. So you backed out. What did you back out of?
This is, right, we didn't, this doesn't include the implicit part of the ARC.
Okay.
That's why it was kind of going there.
Okay. Let's move on to the next slide. Okay. So what Kathy's referring to is, and it's been challenging for us to explain because it's a new concept. This year, the Government Accounting Standard Board added a third element to calculating the ARC that didn't exist before, or at least this year for Larkspur. So, we wanted to show this to you visually because we thought it would be helpful for you to understand. So again, the ARC, as we talked about, the total amount is the large number that we keep referring to, but it's made up of three elements. The largest element for Larkspur is the pay-go, pay-as-you-go amount. That's how much we're paying annually to pay for existing retirees, so folks who have retired or on the books and who we committed to pay their premiums in retirement. That's the largest part of what we are required to pay annually. And you can see there that Larkspur's payments now are over $400,000 annually. The orange is the amount that we've been contributing into the trust. So last year, we put $250,000 into the trust. Our goal that we set was to get that number up to $500,000, and so that orange bar should continue to grow to get up to $500,000, and then we'd be much more in our target range where we're matching what the report's telling you our contribution should be. The new category is the implicit subsidy, which is the gray bar, and I've asked four different people to explain it to me and gotten four different explanations, so I'm going to take my best crack at summarizing how it's been explained to me. For starters, CalPERS uses the same medical premium rate for a retiree who's not enrolled in Medicare that they use for an active employee. So what that means is, if someone retires between 50 and 63, their medical premium is exactly the same as your employees that are sitting here at this table would be, and that's how the PERS system has always done it. When they reach Medicare age, they get moved into a Medicare premium rate, which has a whole different structure and actually has a much lower premium cost, which, you know, is the same for anyone who's not in CalPERS's system. Now, what GASP has said is that, that's great, understand why you're doing that, but when you go to negotiate your healthcare rate, you being CalPERS, say with Kaiser, and Kaiser's trying to figure out what that rate ought to be, they're going to look at everybody that they're covering within that rate. And the issue that GASP has come up with, that they've flagged, is those premiums are determined in part by claims. How many times are people actually going to the doctor and using the benefit? And folks who are retired but not yet of Medicare age, as a general rule, use the doctor more frequently than an employee in their early twenties, on average, that that statistically bears out. And so, there is an implied subsidy there because the rates that are being determined across that entire group of people are essentially having healthier people in the entry level paying, we're paying a rate for them that they probably don't really need if they were in their own experience pool, and that higher rate is so that there's enough money to cover the claims of anybody who's in that older cohort within that base. Making sense so far? Anybody's ever read about Obamacare, this should start to sound really familiar, right? You need younger, healthier people in the system to bring the rates down. That's effectively what CalPERS has done over the years, and GASP has decided that that's something they've identified as an implied or implicit subsidy, and it ought to be captured for purposes of knowing what it is. Here comes the fun part. Not all the actuaries, as best I can tell, totally agree about whether this is an appropriate thing to calculate and exactly 100% how to do it. They all seem to now be sort of coalescing around a methodology, but I've talked to two people who have told me there have been some interesting debates in their world about why we're actually calculating this. Because at the end of the day, this does not affect, really, the dollars you have to set aside. This is much more about an actuarial exercise. So there's my take on what it is. I hope that's helpful. It is now something you'll see in all of these reports, and it will be a component of the ARC. We gave you a sheet that Bartel's put out, and Bartel's a firm that a lot of folks use to do these calculations. It's not the firm Larkspur uses, but I liked their sheet, and you'll note in bold, they did express the point that the ARC for an agency may go up considerably because of this implied subsidy, because for some agencies, the number of folks they have in that window where they're retired but they're not yet of Medicare age is pretty high. And so, basically, the larger that cohort is, the more that implicit subsidy is going to be, and it's going to be reflected in the ARC, and there's going to be pressure on that agency as a result to put more money into trust, which isn't necessarily a bad thing at the end of the day. So, I'm happy to take my best shot at answering more questions about it, but that's my take on January 17 of what it means.
Are there questions of the city manager on this item?
Just a quick question.
Councilmember Harrah.
So just so I understand, I mean, this seems like kind of an artificial construct. Does it, does it create any additional legal liability to the city in terms of its ARC contribution?
There's no legal obligation for you to fund retiree medical beyond your pay-go. There's actually no contractual obligation to put money in a trust, so it doesn't affect you legally.
Which is why we haven't done it before.
That's why no one's done it before, because there is no legal reason. The, sorry, since we're on that topic, your legal obligation for retiree medical is entirely in the employment contracts, and so those only say you will pay for folks in retirement. I think appropriately, the GASP folks have said, well, that's great and all, but you ought to be putting money aside, and there ought to be a mandated system for knowing what that amount of money ought to be. But in terms of a legal mandate, none of this affects you legally.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions from council members? Are there members of the public that would have questions or want to make comments on this agenda item?
I think we might have another.
Our other staff information? Thank you.
Oh, Kathy just wanted me to emphasize, she also pulled out the number so you could see. This is the explicit. So now that we have an implicit subsidy, explicit is what we actually know are real dollars that we're dealing with. So explicit are those two components, the pay-go amount and the actuarial calculation of what we ought to be putting in trust, right? And so, I think what our actuary would tell you, if you want her here someday, is that that's the number she would be focused on when you talk about the ARC, that you ought to, we as a city should be trying to get up into that $900,000, $1 million range per year in terms of contribution.
Right, not the 1.6. So going back to the first question, when you asked me what our liability was, in total, I gave you that implicit. So our explicit, what was, what would be this one, would be 4.3.
Okay.
A little less.
Councilmember Harrah has another question.
Just, just a follow-up. So, so we're working towards a point in time where we will be contributing the full ARC.
That's right.
And where are we on that trajectory now?
All right, so that bar, that color bar graph that you had one back, yeah. So that blue and orange reflects what we actually are meeting today, and so we would want the combination of blue and orange to get up over $900,000 and toward a million. And so, we need to grow that orange component of that bar by another $250,000 to $300,000 to get up into that range, and that's consistent with the goal that you set over a five-year period to get us up to that number.
Right, and since we set that goal, we've been making those contributions and increasing them, and my question is, are we on track to continue to do that so that we, in 2020, for example, will be there?
Yeah, so I have to give you a qualified answer to that, and folks who've watched other financial presentations that we've done for you on this topic and on our pension challenges will recall, I think we were in great shape to not only get to that point but get there early, until PERS started increasing the amount of money they were requiring all government entities. Because for us, that's drawing from essentially the same source within the general fund that we were hoping to put toward employee benefits. So to answer your question, given what we've seen in terms of revenue growth, I believe, yes, we are on target to meet that goal. But I also have been receiving memos and statements from PERS and agencies that watch PERS that they may be considering arbitrarily upping those costs even more, and so we will still probably have another few years of anxiety as we try to reconcile our desire to meet our ARC with the challenges we're facing because PERS keeps upping the amount they want to ask of us. In fact, last week, they issued an advisory that they're considering moving everybody onto a 20-year payment program for the new side funds, and Larkspur, like many agencies, opted for a 30-year payment program. So to imagine if somebody said, we're going to recalc your mortgage from 30-year payment program to a 20-year payment program, and you don't get a choice. We may be in that bind here shortly.
But that's just a fact.
That's just, well, that's, that's what the 800-pound gorilla can do, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a, is there a further staff report on 2.2?
No, I just would summarize for the benefit of the council and the public, we're not where we want to be. We're closer than we were when you set out us on this path. We are working to get us where we need to be. We are covering our retirees and are comfortable with that aspect of it. It's building toward making sure we're making those contributions into the, into the trust fund. These are big scary numbers, and as some of the larger agencies start to report these numbers out, their numbers are magnitude of 10 beyond ours. So this will be a topic, public, you know, public topic of discourse, I think, going forward in 2018 and 19.
Are there members of the public that would like to make comments or ask questions on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll move back to item 2.1. Is that right?
I'm afraid we're not sure.
What?
So I'm afraid our auditor seems to be absent.
Not there.
So, we may need to suspend because we agendized the regular meeting to start at 6:30, so.
Or immediately following the special meeting.
Oh.
I was suggesting until 6:30, just because the intent was in case the special meeting passed.
Yeah, we had anticipated these two items would take more than 45 minutes to complete, and maybe we could, do you know how to reach Mark?
I don't have a cellphone. He hasn't texted me or emailed me, letting me know if he's in touch. I barely have his work.
The alternative to the council is to take up the audit with your staff, but we won't be as nuanced as your auditor, and you may want to hear from an independent third party.
Can he do it on the phone?
I don't know.
All right, we're going to recess till 6:30.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We're going to reconvene the meeting. Thank you for your patience. No? Oh. I've been corrected. We're opening our regular meeting within the special meeting so we can be available should we need to get back to Agenda Item 2.1. Thank you for your patience. The regular meeting will begin. Do we need to have another roll call, Mr. City Manager?
No.
No, okay. So the next item is a presentation and a proclamation. Thank you all for coming this evening. It's nice to see you all. This is a proclamation commending the Larkspur walkers for 30 years of community involvement. Thank you very much, and Mr. Dick Whitley's here and has a few remarks for us this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For those of you who are unaware, my name is Dick Whitley. I'm the Recreation Director for the City of Larkspur, and I would like to thank the council for having us in this evening. The Larkspur Walkers Walking Group that this proclamation concerns this evening was started, as the mayor said, 30 years ago by the previous Recreation Director Nancy Spivey, and she was able to get it started with, I believe, with six walkers in the very beginning, and it's grown, it's ebbed and flowed, but we're 75, 80, 90 walkers strong any given year. And you probably noticed that if you're trying to drive up and down the busy streets here in Larkspur anytime between 9:00 and 10:00 o'clock on a Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Saturday. So, since Nancy retired, since she handed the program back over, it has been run completely with very little oversight by my office, by volunteers, very generous people who volunteer to step up, to lead walks, to organize walks, to organize sympathy cards, to organize social events. And the Walkers is a magnificent program, but it's nothing without its participants, without those people who are involved stepping forward and making it the program that it is. So, the, I just, I like, I like the phrase, the liaison to the Recreation Director is Mary Bowles. Mary, you are here?
Yes.
There's Mary. So Mary will be accepting this, this award on behalf of the Walkers. But Mary, if you'd like to come up, please, that'd be terrific, and join us up here for the presentation.
Dick, would you like to do the honors and read the proclamation?
Yes, sir, I'd be very happy.
And then I'll come in at the end.
Ah.
Where it says my name.
Where it says your name, in witness thereof? A proclamation of the Larkspur City Council commending the Larkspur A proclamation of the Larkspur City Council commending the Larkspur Walkers for 30 years of community involvement. Whereas, former City of Larkspur Recreation Director Nancy Spivey founded the Larkspur Walkers in 1987, whereas, the Larkspur Walkers began with just a handful of walkers and has grown to more than 90 walkers with a daily attendance of between 40 to 60. Whereas, with a pack of up to 60 walkers ranging around Larkspur any given Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or Saturday morning, a traffic calming campaign has been inadvertently instituted as the walkers fill crosswalks across busy streets throughout Larkspur. And whereas, the Walk Map Book has eight walking routes for those the group choose to walk from, whereas, the walkers occasionally venture outside of Larkspur, including Blackie's Pasture in Tiburon, the Marin Sanitary Services Recycling Center in Santa Fel, the Tall Ship Matthew Turner in Saucelito, and Samuel P. Taylor Park, to name a few. Whereas, volunteers serve a crucial role and perform duties such as liaison to the Recreation Director, walk leader, hospitality committee member, get well sympathy correspondence leader, summer picnic coordinator, photographer, and exercise leader, and whereas, the Larkspur Walkers Group has expanded its members' social network, increased time spent in physical activity, and improved the sense of community. Sir, I believe I'm going to hand this over to you now.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And I think it goes without saying that, that the benefits created by this group include a very improved quality of life and improved longevity in our community, which is very unique, so we're really grateful for all that you do. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Dan Hillmer, speaking on behalf of the City Council, as Mayor of the City of Larkspur, do hereby thank and commend the Larkspur Walkers for being an integral part of Larkspur's recreation programming for the past 30 years, in witness thereof. I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Larkspur to be affixed this 17th day of January 2017, I love that. Thank you so much for everything you've done for the community, you're really the identity of Larkspur, and we're very appreciative.
Absolutely.
May we have a quick photo with the mayor, would that feel all right?
Yeah.
Could I have all the Larkspur Walkers up here with the mayor for just a moment, please? Grab a quick photo?
Thank you.
Photo bomb. Photo bomb. Somebody's got to be up front, come on, here we go.
Do you want to get in it and I'll take the photo?
Please.
Okay.
That would be lovely.
You deserve to get in.
Shannon, don't worry about it, I've got it.
I'm going to stand in front, just getting, just getting.
So I need you to scoot in just a little bit closer, closer.
I'm sorry.
Take it closer. And Dan, you need to get closer too, please.
We're all friends here.
Ready? All right, one, oh, what a beautiful group, Larkspur Walkers, one, two, three, we take one more please, one, two, three, perfect.
Great.
Walkers, can I, Walkers? Can I just say something? It is a delight for all of us to drive down the street and see one person in the bright yellow vest walking down briskly, and I'm the one that waves, I don't hog, but I'm the one in the red car going, "Hey!" That's me. You all look at me like, "Who the heck are you?" It's like, "Oh!" Anyway, thank you for making Larkspur a healthy community and atmosphere, it's great to see you walking down the streets. Yeah.
Thank you, I'm sure you're all walking home.
Yes, we are.
Probably a bark crawl. Any updates on our? Nope, okay. So we're going to move ahead with the consent calendar, or no, we have public comment, are there members of the public that would like to make comments or ask questions regarding items that are not on this evening's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to the approval of the consent calendar. Are there any items on the consent calendar that members of the council would like to pull for asking questions or making comments? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the consent.
I'll make that motion to approve the consent calendar.
We have a motion for approval, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the City Manager's Oral Report, nice to see you this evening, thank you. Sorry, it was such a rough hearing. All right, City Manager's Oral Report.
Thank you, council members, and Mr. Mayor, I have just a few items for you and the public this evening. The first is that you may recall, in 2017, we started a process to evaluate our signage in our parks with the idea, long-term, that we would have a cohesive sign program, so as we replace them, they'll be uniform look. After having gone through one survey and one outreach meeting, the staff has launched a second community survey to do some follow-up inquiry, and there's a link on our, the homepage of our website, so anyone who's interested in taking that survey should go to our website and click on the link. Secondly, you'll recall last year, we promised you that at some point we would launch a community outreach meeting to discuss plans we have for the crosswalks here on Magnolia in the downtown, there's two of them of interest that we're focusing on as part of a grant-funded project, one is the crosswalk where Madrone meets Magnolia, and the second one is out by the Lark Theater, and so we'll be having a community meeting to discuss the project in general terms and what we may or may not be able to do in terms of tweaking or amending the project as we head toward a final design so that we can move forward, and that meeting is going to take place on Thursday, January 25, it's at 3:30 in the community room at the Central Marine Police Authority, and we encourage interested folks to attend. And lastly, I don't have a date yet, but we intend in February to hold a community meeting to explain where we are in terms of our five-year streets plan now that Measure B is passed, and as soon as we have a date, we'll push that out to the community through our electronic media, and I'll be announcing it here. We're working on a room that we think is of adequate size for the interests, and what we're finding more and more is that the usual rooms we, we like to book are in heavy demand, so as soon as we have something, that we will push that out to you in the community, but we do intend on having that meeting in February, and I'll remind the council and the public, our goal is to have the draft of that plan toward the end of May so that it's part of your thought process going into the budget season, so. Those are my three announcements, Happy New Year to you, and looking forward to a robust and busy 2018.
Questions of the City Manager this evening? Members of the public, have any questions for the City Manager on his oral report? Yes, ma'am.
Do only be discussed on the 25th.
The two crosswalks that I described are the subject of the meeting on the 25th.
All right, I wasn't aware of that, so that's all I need to know, thank you.
All right, thank you, the next item are council members' reports and comments, any this evening? All right, Councilmember Morrison.
Dan Schwartz and I, we attended the MCCMC Homeless Committee Meeting, MCCMC stands for Marin County Council of Mayors and Councilmembers, the rest program is going to end this year, and so as, as you remember, we all, all the cities, 11 cities, put money in for the rest program, we had some left over, so we ended up buying, we all agreed on that, buying two, they are mobile showers, and in these mobile showers, there are three showers, and so it's in a pilot stage at the moment, and also the truck that's pulling one of these showers, we donated, was it the Public Works truck that we donated?
No, that was from the fire department.
Okay, fire department, so that's great. So the showers are important, and it's going to travel around Marin County, but what's even more important about this whole, it's a process, so when the individuals come to take a shower, their names are going to be put into the database, and then they're also going to be assessed, so we'll find out exactly what agencies needs to contact these individuals to hopefully get them off the seat, so it's just not the shower, it's a complete data process and assessment, so that's exciting, and hopefully it will work. I also attended the Larkspur Chamber of Commerce, 2017, they ended up with 61 members from the beginning of '23, so they've done quite well, it's been very impressive, the wine stroll was sold out last year, so we're going to end up getting more wine merchants to join the wine stroll, and that is going to be July the 21st. We advertise in the San Francisco Gate, it's actually a video, so if someone goes into the San Francisco Gate website, you'll see a video of all of Larkspur, so it's really wonderful to see if you haven't checked it out, they're also going to create a Facebook page, so all the members that would like to post something, they're, they're able to do so on, on the website. I also went to the Larkspur City, I'm sorry, the Larkspur Quonamadera School District and had lunch with our new superintendent, I don't know if you've had a chance to meet him, please do, Brett Gathman, and one of the Board of Trustees, Jill Sellers, and they are very pleased, they feel very supported with the council and with the city staff, and they're working great with Dick Whitley, so it was just nice to connect, and they're wondering, when are we going to start that library? Community center, all right, that's all I have to say.
Councilmember Wayne.
So that with the MCCMC Homeless Committee, is there, it's a three-year proposal from what I remember, are they planning on resubmitting another request, or is it too early to know?
That's correct, that's correct, and that's going to be discussed.
Okay.
Later this year, and the showers are going to be displayed at the next MCCMC dinner, that's at the end of this month.
In Belvedere, how?
You'll be able to see the mobiles.
So if I remember correctly, we voted on that, I think it was in April, are they planning, hoping to come back in April, or?
Or June.
Or June?
Mm-hmm.
Good.
Great, thank you.
Other council member reports this evening? All right, seeing none, we have no public hearings, so we'll move to our business items. I have, have a question for the council, should we hear item 8.2 before we do the financial review, just given people in the audience?
I think that's a nice idea, Dan.
Without objection, we'll move to item 8.2, the community in arts grant from the TOT Fund, and then we'll pick up the mid-year financial review after that. Maybe have a staff report, please, when you're ready.
A moment, please, Jess, and then I'll be happy to do it. Item 8.2 is a community in art grant request from the transient occupancy tax fund, we broadened the agenda item from the last time you saw it to open up conversation in general about this program. Your November 15 meeting, you entertained a request from the Friends of the Library to receive a community in art grant from the TOT Fund, when that grant program was set up, it was set up verbally by the council with direction to staff, and you've annually been placing a sum of money, $10,000, into an account for the purpose of awarding a grant. In general, your goal at the time that you set it up was to create a grant that could support community in the arts, and I went back and checked, and you had also expressed a desire that it be intended to bring folks into the community, and at that time particularly in the downtown was the focus of the discussion that the council had. You'll recall that the council used to have a different program, and this was the element that, this was a program that it was, it was replacing when you made some changes, budgetary changes. So for several years, that $10,000 was awarded to the same entity, which is the Lark Theater. Originally, the primary, or single purpose that it was stated for was to support a youth film program, I think that remains a primary purpose, although we're looking back at the submissions from the Lark, they've tended to talk about their broader mission with respect to arts programs, so the council expressed some concern in, at that meeting about awarding it without having had some broader discussion about how the program's being administered, because this was the first time somebody other than the Lark Theater had asked for the money, and there was some direction to staff to, A, bring this back, this issue of awarding a grant to the Friends of the Library, so that's issue one that your staff report encompasses, and then the second issue that was raised was that perhaps the time had come to create more structure around this pot of money. So speaking to the first item, the issue of giving the award to the Friends of the Library, as staff noted in November 15, it, the request meets this broad criteria that the council established, we did add the caveat, having reflected upon it, that we certainly could see the argument that the Lark Theater does more about promoting business in the downtown than library program does, so if that's the expressed intent or purpose of the council, it's something to consider. And then, secondly, and probably the broader concern that was raised at the meeting and is one for the staff, is that this might give the appearance that the council's using this award as a way to circumvent the policy established years ago of having the TOT Fund in that you are taking money out of the TOT Fund and directing it into what would be more of a general operation of the library, and so is that an appropriate thing for, for the city and the council to do, is something that the council may want to discuss, it is certainly something to consider. On a broader context, at least when we look at our neighbors, the way that budgeting around library programming is done in Larkspur is different than the way our neighbors are doing it, so we also have pointed out this fact, in our neighboring communities that run independent libraries, the programming is part of the library budget, whereas here in Larkspur, that's not been the case. Whenever there's been costs incurred by programming, the invoices have been given to the Friends primarily, with occasionally those invoices going to the Library Foundation to cover the costs associated with providing the programming. It's probably time to talk about changing our practice so that there's a little more oversight and management by the city of programming coming through the library, if for no other reason than liability concerns, but secondarily, the council actually lacks the information or history to contemplate how much has been spent on programming, how much ought to be spent on programming, which is in direct contradiction to an inference made by the presentation to you at the November meeting that the city's not doing enough for programming, but you actually have never been asked and never included it in your budget, so if you started to budget for it and we had a more dynamic relationship with the Friends in terms of what their ability in any given year is to contribute to programming, the council then could make an informed decision if you wanted to contribute money to programming out of the general fund each year, and so I think a system that allowed for that would probably be a healthier, dynamic, long-term for everybody. And then lastly, I think with respect to the program itself, it is time to create some guidelines around the program, we gave you a rough outline of what we think could be some parameters for that so that we could get some feedback from you at this meeting, and then we'll turn your feedback into an actual into an actual, uh, program guideline that we'll bring for you to adopt at, at your next meeting. So those are your conversation points for this evening, and as you alluded to, there are folks in the audience interested in this. I'd only lastly note, I, I do question, um, there was some inference and actually explicit statements in some of the late mail that the staff was trying to pit entities against one another, and, um, I would submit that that's an unfair representation of what staff's been trying to do. Uh, we have, and various entities interested in the same pot of money, and so, um, we simply feel a fiduciary obligation to make the council aware of that.
Thank you for your report. Are there questions of the city manager from council members on his report? Councilmember Way?
So, um, my apologies that I was not at the November fifteenth meeting, I was out of town, but looking at this agenda item now, um, there was, there is reference to a letter that was sent by the Friends of the Library on September twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen, but I don't see a letter from the Lark Theater or the board. Was there anyone submitted at that time or now in reference to the requests for these funds?
So historically, and we're talking five years or whatever the program's history is, um, the, the way it's worked is the letters come in, you've entertained the letter, and you've decided to award it, and the Lark has always submitted that letter in like March. So I don't think this was on the Lark's radar, that there was a possibility there was another entity interested in the money that they needed to, to compete with. And so, um, following past practice, we brought you the letter that came in.
From last year, March?
No, we didn't give you a le- no letter came from the Lark, so we didn't provide you with that.
So there wasn't a letter that documented what they've used the ten thousand dollars for?
Well, each year they tell you what they've done with the money and make a request, but again, I don't think it would have occurred to anyone at the Lark to do it in November.
I just want to make sure I didn't miss a, a letter, a comparative letter, so that's what I was looking for. Okay?
Councilmember Way, you have a question? Or, uh, Morrison, I'm, I'm sorry.
Dan, let's go back to one, another email, part of the email that you just described. I just want you to clear this up, please. The sentence that, um, this person wrote is, considering that the current budget actually reduces the amount of money that the library receives on an annual basis, can you talk about that?
Yeah, that sort of reflects someone who's not particularly familiar with the way we now do budgeting. Um, over the years, we've shifted, uh, all personnel and retiree costs into departmental level budgets. So the budgets now have a significant component that varies radically from year to year, because, A, different employees elect different benefit amounts, B, as employees turn over, the employees that replace them start at the beginning usually of the pay scale, at a lower amount than the person they replaced, and C, as, now we have retiree costs in the departmental bu- budgets, those have been flow based on whether or not those retirees are still around to collect those benefits. So those swings that are being alluded to are entirely about personnel and retiree changes, and if you take those out, the library budget's actually growing at a substantial clip in all non-personnel and retiree basis. So, um, it's, it, in my opinion, that's an unfair statement. It is correct to say that a few years ago, we froze a twenty-eight hour a week position, and we haven't restored that to the budget, so that would be the one personnel cost you could point to that we reduced, but that savings was outstripped by other changes to personnel, uh, including some part-time staff that we added to the budget.
Other questions from council members? From the city, from the city manager? Councilmember Harrow.
To me, there's kind of two issues here. One is, what do we do with the grant for this year? Then the second issue is, how do we deal with the funding for programming going forward and into the future? I'm not sure whether we have to decide the second one tonight, I think that's probably part of our larger budgetary discussions we'll have over the course of the year. Is that fair?
That's fair, I, I think this, um, item, I tried to structure it in a way that you might give us some direction on that second point.
Yes, right.
Because it might be healthy if you're inclined, as I'm increasingly inclined, that programming should be brought into the city's budget with contributions shown as offsetting revenue. That would be direction for the staff to initiate a different kind of dialogue with the Friends.
Okay, that's a, that's a fair clarification, and I, and I hope maybe we'll have that discussion a little bit tonight, because I think that's an, that's an appropriate, um, request. But again, there are these two separate issues. One is what to do with the grant, uh, and then how to deal with the program funding as we go forward, and we'll get into that maybe a little bit this evening. So, um, what I've heard, I think, are essentially policy considerations that might direct us towards a decision that may not use this money for the library, and I guess that's fine, and I think we should take those into account. I guess my question, maybe this is for the city attorney, are there legal constraints that would preclude us from doing that?
I'm not aware of any. Basically, the, the city council has established its own policy for awarding the grant, and, um, generally, the city council has a great deal of discretion in deciding how to interpret its own policies. So if you decide that the grant to the, um, Friends of the Library is consistent with the terms of the, of your own policy, then there should be very little basis on which to call that into question legally.
Okay, so it's really just a policy decision that we have to make about that?
That's correct.
Okay, those are my questions.
One more question.
Councilmember Way.
This is probably bef- before my time, but the ten thousand dollar figure was a certain percentage of the TOT?
No.
Or was it just a number that was pulled out from the council at that time as considered a reasonable amount?
Uh, that was the number the then executive director of the Lark Theater lobbied hard for.
Okay, so we're not, we don't have a formal, I mean, we've nev- we don't have a formal, um, designated number necessarily based on a policy decision that was made at that time?
I can't point to anything other than you picked ten thousand dollars, the council at that time.
Pick ten thousand.
Picked the number ten thousand dollars, that's right.
Okay.
Other, other comments or questions, Councilmember Two?
Uh, probably more of a clarification, it's from my own memory. Um, maybe Mayor Hillmer can help with that. Um, there, there was a time when we used to take, I think, something like ten percent of the total TOT, and that that was the allocated amount, so that, that would fluctuate, you know? Yeah, year after year, depending on how well the hotels, or hotel did. Subsequent to that, we wanted to direct more of the TOT money specifically and directly into efforts that dealt with business development, but sliced off, as the city manager has suggested, you know, a specific amount to, um, you know, meet the asking amount from the Lark Theater. Does that sound about right for everybody?
Yeah, a little extra info maybe, so it remains your policy that we set aside ten percent of the TOT revenue in the TOT Fund. That, that is your existing adopted policy. For many years, that number was roughly forty to fifty thousand dollars a year, and when I got here, um, we were many years into a program to turn around and give all that money out in grants. And, um, at that time, the program had really, uh, struggled to have any, have its criteria sort of administered. Uh, years ago, when it got launched, there was a pretty sophisticated application and review process with a committee and a panel. So we actually invited some former council members to, um, help us review the proj- process, and they joined us ultimately in the conclusion that that program should stop. And so that, we suspended that grant program, and at that time, the executive director for the Lark had said, "There's one thing I'm particularly concerned about, which is the children's, uh, film festival they had started, that that was heavily reliant on the city subsidy." And so ultimately, the council felt that was something they still wanted to support. It may be worth noting that subsequent to all that, you've now dedicated most of the TOT money that comes in to help support the Chamber of Commerce. So, um, on an annual basis, you don't have much capacity beyond the ten thousand dollars, uh, in terms of what's coming in and what's going back out.
Councilmember Morrison.
Another clarification. So if I'm understanding this correctly, Dan, if the Friends of the Library come and explain, uh, to the board and explain about the programs, and they say they have a certain amount of money to give towards the programs, you're saying that we can take the rest from the general fund and make up the difference? Is that what I'm hearing? So we're supporting the Friends of the Library as soon as we know what programs they need funds for? Did I make that up?
So, uh, I think, I think we're on the same track, I just maybe say it a little bit differently.
Okay, all right, why don't you say it differently?
On that second, I, so I think you're referring to sort of the second, the, the second issue beyond the grant money, which is, how, what kind of relationship should we have about library programming? What I'm suggesting is that the city should assume the responsibility for budgeting for programming, and that consideration on your part as a council should be, first, an inquiry to the two groups that support the library, how much they think they will be able to contribute, however it is they raise money. To programming in the subsequent fiscal year. And then the council can say to the library director, "What does that look like? How much does that buy us?" Uh, which you've never had that conversation, at least while I've been here, no one's ever had that conversation, that the Friends can give us X amount of dollars, and this is how much programming X amount of dollars buys. And so then, if the council says, "Well, we don't want to offer X, we want to offer X plus Y amount of programming," and then we say to the library director, "Well, what costs to offer that?", then you can decide if the general fund should provide that difference. And you could do that each year, based on the health of the economy. So, and I think that's generally, my impression, looking at the budgets of some of the other independent libraries, that's how they function. It happens that those other independent libraries as a whole, their friends are generating larger amounts of money, and there's probably a whole host of reasons I didn't go into or look into about why that may or may not be. The point is, you don't have that dynamic in place right now, um, and it's probably time to have that more formal dynamic in place. And also, I guess I should add, uh, staff recommendation doesn't preclude the Friends from applying once you've established the guidelines. I mean, right now, if the, if the Lark Theater turned in a letter and applied, I'd recommend you deny it too until you establish these guidelines.
Councilmember Way?
And on to that same subject of, um, in other libraries.
We're going to have time to discuss, I just want to-
That, you made a reference to, um, San Isamo and the Mill Valley Library budget programming, the sixty to eighty thousand dollars. Would that be a rough ballpark of what we may have to consider?
I have no idea, because I, I, I guess I would say, I'm guessing, based on anecdotal evidence I have, that the amount of money coming in isn't anywhere near that.
For programming?
For programming.
Okay.
So I'm going to speculate that our current programming can be offered for a much lower amount, and then I suspect you're going to hear from Janice Ackle, library director, and/or various advocates for the library, that you ought to be spending more money, and there ought to be a lot more programming, and that's ultimately a council discussion to have.
Other council member questions? Uh, I just want to reference the comment the city manager made earlier about the history of the use of these monies. Uh, I've been on the council a while, long enough to see, uh, the, the program change, and this, I, I would just reinforce what he said earlier about the, the origins of this being, uh, hotel tax or transient occupancy tax monies, mostly collected out in the Larkspur Landing area that were deemed appropriate to, to help revitalize the historic downtown inland. So the purpose was to, uh, give, give a boost to the business owners in the, in the downtown that were away from the freeway and away from the ferry and the bridge. So, uh, I want to point that out for the council as, as, uh, part of the purpose discussion here. So with that, I'll invite, uh, anyone, uh, probably starting with representatives of the Friends, if they'd like to make some comments regarding this item tonight. Hi, please introduce yourself and, and, uh-
Good evening.
Look forward to your comments.
I'm Jim Scheller, I live at twenty-three Lark Court, and I want to thank you for the opportunity, uh, to speak for the Friends. And as was pointed out, uh, I think was recommended that perhaps in the next coming fiscal year to perhaps have the city budget and the library budget look at funding for programs from the, from the city. But presently, all of the programs that the library provides is funded by the Friends of the Library, and that's what I'd like to talk to about now. Uh, last year, the programs that we funded for the library drew over eight thousand participants, and I have no doubt that mu- many of those people would have gone on to spend money locally at Ruley's, Equator, and other places if the idea is to use this money to generate business within the city. We also, the programs also serve a wide range of generations, from toddlers to the senior program at Mount Tam, or at, uh, Tama Pius up on the hill. There's a TED program of, uh, technology, entertainment, and design. Last two components would qualify as art, and, uh, that program has been so successful, it's gone from being in one room to now it fills the auditorium. And what we're requesting is to use additional monies to expand these programs, and some ideas for this expansion would be to have a children's book club, to, uh, have a teen, teen program, to have young adult programs, uh, to maybe start writing groups, have children's book club groups, there, there's a lot of things that we could do with additional monies. And, uh, one thing you did mention about the, uh, money coming in at other libraries, and they get that a lot from their book sales. We met with the Friends of the Mill Valley Library the other day, and it's very exciting to hear how they increase their revenues by book sales, and what we need are additional funds to help set that up. All of which, which brings me to the point that our library, your library, is part of the city, and wa- and it's the art part of the city. And, uh, I would think that, uh, there would be an incentive to use this money set aside for art projects to increase businesses in the city, to send it to the Friends to provide these programs for the library. The library is part of the art aspect of the city, uh, and I would think you would want to treat that as such. A lesson from my granddaughter, I was out with my five-year-old granddaughter at lunch, and, uh, the waiter brought me a dish of ice cream and a cookie, and Lily leaned over and said, "Share." And sharing, I think, is what this is about. So why, I ask, why wouldn't the council want to be part of spreading this money around for the arts, for the theater, where you get the most bang for your buck? Thank you very much.
Are there other members of the public that would like to make comments or ask questions regarding this agenda item? Hi. Ladies first?
Hi, my name is Mary Clyde, and I live at fifty-one Walnut Avenue. Um, I'm the, I'm on the board of the Lark Theater, and, um, I just want to thank you for your history of supporting the Lark through the TOT, um, funds, and, um, it's been well-used. Um, I, I'm just here to, I don't want to feel like I'm in a battle against the library, because, um, I think they do wonderful programming as well, um, but I am here just to remind you of what we're doing and how we have used the funds in the past. Also, to answer a couple of questions you seemed to have earlier on, is one is the date that was established historically on our calendar, and we always have it on our calendar, is March to submit our, um, request for the TOT funds, and so that was on our calendar, but we did not know there was another letter submitted ahead of time. We did, we, I do have a letter that was given to Ann Morrison, um, when we heard a letter was submitted for the funds as well, so there was a letter. Uh, I'm sorry, it wasn't reissued, um, again, for this meeting. We weren't quite sure what was going to happen, if there was just an announcement or what at this meeting, but we are on schedule to submit it in March, if that is become, if that- But we are on schedule to submit it in March, if that is become, if that continues to be the date for submissions. Historically, I think it goes back about eight years that we've been receiving some of the funds, and it was our previous executive director that organized the funds to, to be used for the arts. And we've historically used the monies for producing the annual high school filmmakers' showcase. And what we do is we hire somebody who goes to all the high schools in Marin County and gets applicants for the, for films to be shown at the theater and submitted to our festival. And the last few years, we've had submissions from virtually every single high school in Marin County. We had such a successful turnout in the recent years that we have to do two showings. We have an afternoon showing for some of the shows and then an evening showing. We try to make each child, or each student feel like they, it's their premiere, and they get lanyards and photo opportunities and make it, you know, a really special night. It's, it's just been a terrific program, and we really count on that money for that dedicated, you know, project that's been established all these years. If we have to go out and do additional fundraising, because we are sharing the funds, we will do that because we're not going to stop this, this thing that was, has been established and the students are looking forward to. So no fear there. But I just want to update you what the money is used for. We've also started recently using the theater for, for free. We're giving the student, any school that wants to do an event at the theater, we're offering the theater for free. So that's kind of been a new, something we just feel really strongly that we want to do. We don't really like publicize it, but if like, when the schools come to us, like, we had two events this week. One was Hall, and I think it was Marin Primary. Both had an event this week at the theater, and we don't charge them rent, and we help them make a successful event as well. And that's something that we might have to additionally raise money for, and we might raise the money at our next fund in need at the annual Academy Awards next month or in March. So these are kind of the things that we're doing for outreach that, you know, we don't really have assigned monies for as a nonprofit. But I also have a, a letter here that lists all the, the events that we do throughout the year. We're open 365 days of the year. We do six to eight feature films a week. We do 11 Met operas. We do 12 National Theater Live Broadcast, broadcasts, five museum exhibitions, five Broadway productions. We do telecast from international performances around the globe. We do Shakespeare community, comedy, stage, Russia stage, six exceptional live onstage Lark performances from comedians and other live performances. We do a Mind Reels documentary that is outstanding and is growing in attendance. It's about five to six film documentaries that come together, have a common theme, and then we have the producers or other people come and discuss it, and we provide lunch from farmhouse local. It's a really terrific thing that we're, that's just really growing in attendance. We also do a family film series that we get outside money for, that is a series of younger children's films, usually, that will be in the spring. And we did an outreach for programming for families at risk. We offered free films to, when the fires were in Northern California, we offered any free films, and people took us up on that, and they came in and watched movies. And also, coming up is our award tonight, which we're very proud of, which is a sold-out. And many of our operas and National Theater Lives are sold-out performances, usually multiples, showing them four to six times each. So that's just, I know you guys have a lot to hear through the year, and you kind of forget what the Lark's doing, but it is going strong and growing. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Other members of the public that would like to make comments, ask questions on this item? Yes, sir.
Evening.
Hi.
Steve Stein, 203 Birch Avenue. As has already been pointed out, the last thing that I think any of us wanted or anticipated is that there would be some sort of a mock contest between the library and the Lark Theater. I happen to support both organizations. My better half works at the library as a volunteer, worked at the Lark when it first opened up, painting and fixing and so on, and we're loyal to both. And the last thing, the last thing that should happen tonight or at any time is some suggestion that there is some competition between these two entities. So having said that, as you know, because I've written a letter to you and spoken to some of you, I am very much in favor of having the council go through with what it said it was going to do back in November. And let me read, or what, or what the staff had recommended, I should say. Let me read what that was. This is your staff report on this subject, November the 3rd. The programs outlined by the Friends of the Larkspur Library appear to fulfill the intent of the grant program, as stated by the council at the time the fund was created. That's reading word for word what your staff wrote to you. Continuing, "It is recommended for the council to approve the attached resolution, awarding money to the Friends of the Larkspur Library, or provide direction to the staff." Now, I don't know what exactly transpired between November the 3rd and January the 8th, when you got the current recommendation, which was diametrically opposite. But I do know this. Organizations, and you folks know this as well, because you were in the business also of soliciting money when you go for bond issues. You don't start soliciting money unless you have a pretty good idea what the answer is going to be. I wasn't privy to what the Friends did or did not do in preparing their request, but I will almost guarantee you that they would not have done that had they not had a fair indication that the request was going to be looked upon with some degree of favor. Not saying it was a sure thing. Not saying it was a sure thing, but it's extremely unlikely. Anyway, we're here.
I would, I would take issue with those words.
Well, you say that, but the, when the council, when, 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 when the city goes for a bond issue, they spend an awful lot of time with consultants checking to see, is the bond issue or the tax going to pass? It's just natural. Anyway, if, if it happened, it happened. If it didn't happen, it didn't happen. Where does this leave us today? It sends an awful signal if, having gone this far, the council now says, no, we're going to pull the rug out from under you. Particularly now, particularly when, just recently, during this whole time, you have plans for a new library, you've taken the sign down. That did not go unnoticed. That sign has to go back up. The new library, the council has to recommit to the new library, and so fundraising can proceed. That's a big scale. That's a lot of money. That's a big project. This.
I would ask you to focus on the agenda item, please.
I, I, I think I am, but I'll be happy to. This is a small amount of money. But here again, the principle is exactly the same. If the Friends, and I have supported the Friends and intend to continue to do so, if the Friends are going to be able to raise money, they have to be able to say, we're raising money for something that the city supports. It's a lot easier to get matching grants, again, as I think you know, than to get just grants. I can almost guarantee you that if the council approves this request, you will get matching grants. I can also say, if you put it aside, it'll be much more difficult for people like myself who are on both sides of the fence, I'm both a solicitor and a contributor, to raise money. Had this not happened to begin with, that's one thing. It did happen. We are here. We're not trying to compete with the Lark Theater. As I say, I contribute to that too. So do you. That's not the point. The point is, it's easy to say, I love the library. Well, actions do speak louder than words. Let me, let me just read one thing from, of, of the letter that I wrote to you in here, just one paragraph, then I'm going to sit down because I'm taking too much of your time. But I'll read this one piece. "The council has several ways to resolve any unnecessary competition that has been set up between the Lark Theater and the Larkspur Library." Because it should not, it should not have come to that. Mary Clyde is correct. "One is to go ahead with the grant as planned while observing how many past years of similar grants went solely to the Lark Theater." That's one. "Another resolution would be to restructure the funding categories for this year only and allow grants to proceed to both organizations, even though the library's request was prior in time and had been on the path to a clear approval." And by the way, even if you improved both of the grants, that's still about 2% of all your TOT money for the year. That's not a whole lot. And then finally, the council could split the $10,000 and grant money if after each request. That's the least satisfactory solution, the Solomonic solution. But at least it would avoid the negative symbolism of turning down the library request altogether, or postponing it indefinitely through obscure bureaucratic jargon. So I'll sit down. I, I hope you'll consider what I've said and take it to heart. And the mention of the new library, it's not on the agenda, we understand that. But do think about the fact that we are in the business of trying to get private money to do something on both a small scale right now and on a large scale later. Please, please, don't pull the rug out from under us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We're appreciative of all the efforts that everybody in the community has put toward these important things. Are there other members of the public that would like to make comments or ask questions on this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for discussion. Mr. City Manager, would you like to help us frame the issues? I think Councilmember Harof outlined them before pretty well, but.
I don't have anything to add in terms of, I think you first need to make a decision about this specific request and then.
Correct.
And then give us general direction about the program going forward. And then we've added the additional discussion you may want to have in direction with respect to working more closely with the Friends, but bringing programming into the city budget, which would be direction for preparing the seven, the 18, 19 budget.
All right. Councilmember Harof, would you like to start?
Yes, and actually, I'd just like to ask a question, and, and kind of going back to the discussion we had earlier about having some guidelines for how the decision may, is made about the grant going forward into the future, and now even. And as I kind of look at the guidelines, the way you've got it in terms of timing, you would envision, or at least the guidelines would envision, that there would be a subcommittee of the city council that would take a first cut at a decision about how to grant, award the grant.
I thought that would be the most expeditious way to, to manage any requests that came in.
No, and I think that, that seems, that seems reasonable. And then a decision based upon that recommendation by the full council sometime in, in April.
I thought April made a lot of sense, because it's, as we're planning for our subsequent fiscal year, and a lot of entities do tend to talk to us in the spring. I do think one of the problems with the current setup is that the money's there till somebody asks for it, and then it's gone.
Right.
And that's created this unnecessary tension.
And I think that's absolutely right. And, and I guess my question is, as I read the staff report, it's a little confusing to me because it recommended that the Friends' request be not accepted at this point. But then we're proposing a, a mechanism where if it were just to stay in the record, it could be considered as part of this process if we adopt the guidelines that you suggest.
You certainly have the option to just say, carry this request through to the new system, but until I've get, got direction from you, I don't know if there are additional criteria you want to impose on that process.
No, understood. I'm just saying, and we can discuss whether there are additional criteria, but just if we adopt something that looks like what's in the staff report, you know, it, it seems to me that we could consider both applications. You get the, the, the theater application on file, we have the, if the Friends' application on file. If we adopt something like the recommendations in the staff report, they could be considered pursuant to that process in our April.
That's certainly one option available to you. And I also think that, if I recall from November 15, Councilmember Moore, Vice Mayor Morrison, excuse me, had suggested just splitting the money and awarding it then. So, I mean, there's also, any, you've got $10,000 that you set into a discretionary account.
What we didn't, what we didn't have at the last meeting was what I think is a very helpful thing that we do have today, which is a recommendation, which we may want to fiddle with a little bit, but a recommendation for a process by which these applications can be considered in a timely way.
Yes, and I certainly would submit that a considerable portion of your direction to me on November 15 was to come back and give us the structure to have a proper discussion about how we do these awards.
Exactly. Because I think we were all caught a little off-guard at that initial meeting, because we just had the one application, we didn't have anything from the theater. I think we want to be fair and equitable in the decisions that we make and have it undertaken pursuant to a process that is, you know, more transparent going forward into the future and currently. So I, I would, I would encourage the council to consider that, that approach, subject to further discussion on what the guidelines ought to look like.
Councilmember Morrison, did you have something you wanted to lead off with in the discussion?
I was going to ask Jim the question, but I can, oh, sorry. I was asked Jim about the Friends of the Library. I was just going to ask him about maybe the, the amount they, they have spent. May I call him back up to the podium?
Sure. I'm hoping we can focus on, on.
Thank you.
Okay, I just, I just want to, I'm just curious. Jim, how much have you spent so far on the programs?
On programs, approximately $10,000, a little over $10,000 for this past year.
Past year? Okay. That's perfect. Thank you. So I, I agree with, with Councilman Harof that we need to have a, you know, figure out how to proceed with the format, the form, for, for the subcommittee to look, to look over. I mean, I don't, is that, are you asking for that type of direction? I'm not too sure exactly.
Well, I've provided you with a rough outline of, of how I would create the program. It's very rough, but I could turn that into a much more formal policy before the next meeting. If you don't like one of these sort of general parameters, or you'd like to add a parameter or take one away, or massage one of them, now's the time to tell me that. Because I'm soliciting direction to come back at the next meeting with a policy.
All right.
So to, to clarify, we, because this decision was supposed to have been made back in November 15th for the, for the last, that's what I'm confused about.
There's words being thrown around that aren't the correct words. That the policy was, the council would entertain requests when they came in.
Okay, so it's not in a calendar year or a fiscal year?
Within the fiscal year.
Okay.
So the request came in and we put it on the agenda. It was inferred that somehow, that it was a known decision on the part of the council, what would happen if a request came in. And I would submit, because I know, since I wrote the agenda item, that most of you weren't even aware that it existed until I sent it to you, which would have been in five or six days prior to that meeting. So that, that's sort of how we've always administered this process. It's just in the past, it's been one entity who's consistently asked for that money in March. I don't, I, I've been here the whole time. I don't think we created the March date. I think the Lark, for their purposes, felt March was the right time to come in and ask for the money. And it wouldn't shock me, if I were running the Lark, I'd put it on my program too and say, every March, you're supposed to ask the city for some money.
So within this calendar year, or this fiscal year of 2016, '17, there has not been a $10,000 grant?
That's right.
Yet. Got it.
Councilmember Chu.
I think City Manager.
I think the city manager's characterization is correct for the benefit of those who weren't in the last meeting or for Councilmember Way. We had no clue that this was coming up until we got our packets. Okay? That being said, there was no way that the council had predetermined that this grant was going to be funded. It's just a recommendation that came from staff, which is what all happens in the information that's presented to us. You know, ultimately, they may make a recommendation, but if we don't agree, then it doesn't happen. And that's effectively what happened the last time. So there was no predetermined expectation that the grant would be awarded, at least not from where I sit. Okay, so that clarifies the comment that Mayor Hillmer made when he said he disagreed with the characterization that, you know, there was an expectation or a good expectation that the funds would be granted.
Based on the November 3 letter.
Yeah. I don't think anything has transpired since the last meeting. You know, it's just been waiting to come back to us for further discussion. I would say what came out of that discussion was that nobody, including myself, felt that either organization wasn't deserving of it because they do meet the conditions of the grant. It was really a question that was raised, okay, what about the Lark? You know, we're thinking that the Lark has an application that we're going to receive sometime in the fiscal year. So aside from that, though, I think there were some things left unsaid, and I don't remember if city manager picked up on my questioning or I kind of agreed with him. But we were probably thinking the same thing at the same time. And that is that you have public money for a specific fund with a specific purpose going to a nonprofit organization, but you have a department head and a member of staff making a budget presentation for an item that is not specific. So it makes it look like the council, the impression it could be left with publicly is the council is making a redirection of special funds, specific purpose money, and moving it back to the general fund. Okay, so that's where that part of it came from. And to some degree, I still have a little concern about that impression that's left. I would rather take $10,000 if we need to award it in this fiscal year as opposed to this calendar year because I would think that nonprofits are on a calendar year. But if it's $10,000 we have and we want it to go to both organizations, you know, ultimately we're going to find out that if that's our cap, that it's going to be $5,000 each. Okay, I don't think, whether we form a committee or not, that, you know, we're going to create like it's been suggested, a competition. So I don't know what we do with the other $5,000. It's almost like $5,000 needs to come out of the TOT and go to the Lark and $5,000 needs to come out of the general fund from something else and goes to the library for programming until we figure this out.
Well, you're talking about the $10,000.
Well, that's what I mean, but I don't know what to do with the other five.
I think it's probably appropriate for me to make some comments. Both organizations are certainly deserving. We want to help both organizations. It's been our practice to help both organizations. How we go about that needs to make sense. There's a context for this, for these funds that the city manager's describing, that I think it would be worth our while to take the time to get more information and consider how to structure this properly and then determine not only how to move forward but how to use the monies appropriately. Because I want to make sure that we're consistent and that we're paying attention to the purpose that this was ascribed to and we don't set up a precedent that starts to create misunderstandings and creates the wrong impressions about what the city's intentions are with respect to support. And also, I think if we can look at this, we can look at the amounts involved and look at the goals. And we might need to make some adjustments there too because I think we want to be effective, not just reactive in dividing a number. So I would hope we could have a more rich discussion on how we can be constructive with our intent here. Councilmember Way.
Well, I can appreciate that, but I think that policy decision and that framework's going to take a while. And meanwhile, both organizations have already committed to programmatic needs. They've probably already set up calendars of events and things that they're hoping will be funded appropriately in the next few, six months. So, I mean, I don't think...
I don't have a problem using the money, but I want to put the right policy discussion with it so that we're not reacting to something when we should be proactive about it all.
Do you see a timeline for that? Something like April or...
I think the city manager's recommendation and with Councilmember Harof's comments makes a lot of sense.
So that may indicate, last year, if the, so now we're in 2016, 17, entering 17, 18, that would double the money then, possibly?
No, no, no. We're in 17, 18 now.
Right.
We already spent the 16, 17 money. That was awarded to the Lark last year.
Okay, that's what I thought I asked earlier, but I guess I didn't ask that correctly.
I'm sorry if I answered incorrectly.
Okay.
So the 16, 17 money was awarded during that fiscal year. You awarded, I'd have to check, I mean, yes, it was end of March or beginning of April.
Okay, that's, I think my question was, because I understood the letter from Ms. Clyde to be March of last year, so I thought then it was still within that other fiscal year. So, all right.
And I'm speaking without knowing anything, but I'd like to consider increasing the amounts if that's what makes sense. I just don't know what...
I saw Kathy panic there.
Well, as I say, I don't know what that means, but I'd like to be more helpful.
Would you want to have that discussion?
If that's what our discussions, I'm sorry.
I'd be happy to discuss that issue.
Yeah, at the right time.
Okay.
How about now?
That would have been item number one.
That would be item number one?
Because we were supposed to have a mid-year budget review.
Well, although we tend to not focus heavily on the TOT fund and our mid-year budget review.
Yeah, but if we consider general fund money.
So...
Anyway, I think process is more important than reacting to something tonight, although I do would like to, I'd like to help, and I think the council would like to help as quickly as possible.
I think the council member Way's point, though, because of the nature of the expenditures of things that are already planning and progress for the second half of our fiscal year, I guess I wasn't totally clear about, you know, one of the comments I made. I guess what I'm saying is that even if we had a process in place, would the outcome for this year change?
Maybe not, but we need to work together to come to the right conclusion for this.
Well, actually, if I could, I think there is a question that Councilmember Chu's comment raises that you may want to provide some direction tonight. And we attempt to sort of allude to the staff report, which is, as we draft these guidelines, do you want entities whose use of funds is primarily to support, directly support the city to be eligible for this particular pot of money? I think that's a question, I don't have an answer. It's fine, you know, but you need to, you probably would want to answer that because it goes to the heart of this discussion about if not this pot of money, what pot of money may or may not support. Also, I do think it just needs to be emphasized, there's a attempt, there's sort of a suggestion in some of the comments that, that your decision has anything to do with your support of the Friends, and I think it has this broader issue of how much programming should be offered and how much should be spent on it and where should that money come from. And that's not a statement one way or the other about how you feel about the Friends or their mission or library programming. It's that you have the challenge that every dollar you spend on one thing is a dollar you can't spend on another thing. And you have to have all these conversations in context of what that means. You're having this exercise now that you have a $10,000 pot, and if you spend it in one place, you can't spend the other, and you can split the baby if you want to. Or you might want to put the call out and find out there's three or four other entities in the downtown that could all benefit from a little bit of money. You know, those are all options available to you that we've never explored in the past. But I think this conversation about library programming is a much bigger one than, and the, you know, the order direction of staff is really important in the November meeting because those who were in attendance will recall, we had the discussion during the meeting about the appearance of moving money from the TOT fund to offset what's effectively a city operation at the end. We did have that as part of the conversation. And the council also asked us to give some consideration to the library budget because the Friends came up to the mic and spoke heavily about the library's overall budget during the course of their presentation and sort of forced staff to rethink the broader context of this request.
Councilmember Harof and then Councilmember Way.
I'd kind of like to go back to the previous suggestion that I made, which is, again, with some refinement, and the city manager's comments just now suggest one refinement that might be appropriate to the guidelines for deciding how these grants would be awarded. And one would be whether it's to support something that's a normal city function. I don't know exactly what the language would be, where it's being funded separately potentially from the general fund. I would like to suggest that we, with a change along those lines, I would like to suggest that the city manager go back with that change in mind and maybe others that members of the council would like to offer now, provide a more refined version of the guidelines that we could consider, as you suggested earlier in this evening's meeting, a more refined version of those guidelines that we can consider specifically at an upcoming city council meeting. And that we use those guidelines, and I think incorporating the timeframes that are suggested in the current recommendation. We use those guidelines to make a decision about pending applications that we have received in accordance with the timeframe set out in those guidelines, whatever they may be. There may be others that may come in. We don't have any idea. It's possible. I'd also like to encourage going forward after that process, but keeping that process in place. You know, in terms of library programming, that we adopt the suggestion that you've been endorsing, to take a look at how we do provide budgeting for programming within our overall budget process and adopt a model that is more along the lines of some of our sister communities. And that'll take a little bit more work to figure out how that actually occurs. And I would like to encourage giving direction to the city manager to provide some more refined ideas about how that could, that could in fact happen going forward, maybe consider those items at the next city council meeting. That'd be my suggestion.
I like that.
And would that be inclusive of his, the city manager's description, including the Friends as part of that process?
Yes.
I would agree.
Yeah, I'd be neutral in terms of the applications that are pending. I mean, we don't have to talk about them. But they would be considered, whatever they may be, and there may be some that comes out of the blue during that period of time. But I think that would be a more equitable way of responding to the concerns that we've been considering here. We have a process and a mechanism for actually allocating the money and moving forward in terms of programming in the future.
Mr. City Manager, what, how would you focus this on the proper direction for you after that?
I think I'll offer a summary, and then if I see five heads nod, I'll feel pretty good about where we are. So if I've heard everything correctly, first, we won't award any money tonight, and instead the staff will go back and write guidelines along the lines of what's in the staff report. The additional caveat that we work on some language that says we really want this pot of money to go to entities who are operating outside of things the city is actively involved with. That's part one. And then part two is to begin a dialogue with the Friends about how they're looking at programming so that we can start to plan for reflecting programming in our fiscal year, 18, 19 budget, in a way so that you are better informed about the cost of programming, what the Friends are capable of raising, and then you can make a decision about what you might contribute out of the general fund to supplement what they're able to raise. And then I'll add, I'll impose a third aspect of that on myself, and it's based on a comment from Councilmember Way, which I think is to ask the Friends and the library director what they've committed to already to get us through the end of the fiscal year and if funds are actually available to get us the end of the fiscal year so that we can determine if they do need this money to make it to the end of fiscal year. And if so, we can come back to you and let you know there's a concern because we've advertised programming and we may not have sufficient funds to get to there.
And those things could all be considered as part of the decision-making process that we would implement after we adopt the guidelines.
Well, and if we need money and it's of magnitude within my spending authority, I may be just reporting out to you, figured out a way to get them to the end of the fiscal year, and then we'll sort it all out then.
Sure.
I'm not even... I'm not.
Councilmember Way has a question.
So part two, or the second point that you brought up, was, clarify it for me, but it sounded as if, if there was funding that was available for the general fund for the entity that is requesting it, then they will not be regarded as a possible.
No, I think if the entity's requesting it for the purpose of spending it on things that are effectively city operation, right? So let's use another entity that may come forward. I have no idea, and it's hypothetical, but we have the Larksburg Community Foundation, right? They do some things where they say this is specifically to support the city in something the city's doing, but they also have a bunch of things they fund that have nothing to do with the city. In effect, I think they're a supporter of the Lark Theater for certain things. I think I'm suggesting, based on the comments I heard, that if it's something where it's going to go to the city, this isn't the pot of money you want necessarily going to activities that are part of the city's functions.
So how do we reconcile that with, let's say, the park and wreck, wrecking crew, the 501(c)(3) that they have? Let's say they, as a nonprofit, 501(c)(3) wants to come and apply for this money too, but they are ostensibly providing it for city funding for, let's say, a park structure?
That's exactly my point. I don't think they should probably be asking for this particular pot of money. Based on the general discussions over the years about the TOT fund, it seems to me that wasn't probably the intent of the council. I think whether you want to make sponsorship awards and grants out of another pot of money is a whole nother discussion. Just this particular pot of money, I think you might want to narrow that scope to say it wasn't our intent to hand this money out as a grant so it could be turned around and spent on something the city might otherwise contribute to from some other fund. I think it gives an odd appearance of why you created the TOT fund.
I think a different way to express that also is where the city's a beneficiary, direct beneficiary. That's where I've been struggling with it.
Yeah, yeah. Like I said, I need a little time to get the exact language right, but that's essentially the sentiment.
Well, also, it's part of an economic development conversation because the city's never had really any resources that have been specifically dedicated to that other than collecting permit fees, et cetera. So it was part of a way to encourage improvement in parts of the city that were currently being neglected at the time this originated. And then it turned into a revolving loan fund for storefronts for a while. So there was an evolution to this that had everything to do with economic development and not reinvesting it into city activities. So that's the point the city manager's trying to make. So I think that's very, very important to this because there's a philosophical discussion here. Are there councilmember comments?
Yes, I still, I'm still concerned about a few things. So back to my point of whether the, because based on the November 3 memo and the November 15 meeting, if the Friends had materially relied upon thinking that this was a confirmed thing to them, I'm just saying if that came through. And may... And may have pre-programmed some budgety things within their timeframe relying on that money. You made a statement that you would look at that and have a discussion, and maybe we'll be able to provide some support for that. Is that correct?
I'm saying that if I find out that the Library Director authorized the advertising of programming already that are not sufficient funds for, then I have obligation to analyze that, report out to you, and need to supplement the library budget.
Then how do we reconcile that with perhaps the Lark Theater, which had also, in the past, relied upon this, have already committed themselves to programming, considering that they would be receiving that?
Actually, one of the best things I heard tonight is that the Lark achieved what had upset the council so much when you canceled the old program. Because the old program, almost all the grants being awarded, every entity that came up said, "Our entire entity, or this particular enterprise, is solely reliant on the city's money." And what I heard tonight is, "The Lark Theater will make their program happen. It will be harder for them if they don't have the city money." And that was a big concern of the council back when they were using the old program. In fact, the Food and Flower was the best example. They just flat-out told you, "We're shutting down if the city stops paying for everything." And I think the council at the time would applaud now, and you have some members who are here, but that the Lark has said tonight, "We'll find a way because the program's too important, but it sure helps a lot." And I think that was one of the goals that I remember from the discussion back then. So to answer your question, I didn't hear the Lark say, "We made a programming decision that we can't handle if the city's money doesn't come through."
Just a moment of levity. One of the funniest movies I ever saw was at the film show, youth film showcase at the Lark Theater put on by the theater group. So I, myself, it's one, it's a very strong program, in my opinion. So any, any shift here, I think, would be noticeable. So I want to make sure that we see this in context.
I'd like to wrap this up. What do you think?
I heard, I heard direction.
I have one more comment.
I saw nods. Councilmember Way.
This has been a bit of a struggle, so as you can tell by all my questions and things. I really appreciate Kevin's outline of how the process should go, and I think we have general agreement about whether, we need to refine this because it's just too nebulous right now. And I didn't, I didn't fully appreciate the history because it has been so nebulously there, the dollar amount, et cetera. But at the same, and I, and I think we'll be able to accomplish that by probably April and be able to allocate it in a new format. But I really think symbolically, it's really important that we recognize that the Friends Library is really struggling to become the, a true robust fundraiser for the, for the library and for current and future because we are weak in that department. And I'm very supportive of the community that's interested in continuing to use the, see this as a real opportunity to benefit Larkspur and our community. So I want to put that forward. I'm a donor to both, but I really see that the future for the, for keeping our library sustainable is that if we allow the Friends to blossom. So there you go.
Couldn't agree more. Other Councilmember comments on this item? Seeing none? That concludes that item on the agenda. Has our...
We're going to work under the assumption that the audit's probably going to be on a different night.
Okay. So the audit's going to be on a different night.
Be home a little earlier.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
Take care.
We'll, we'll stay in touch. Item 8.3, City Council Committee Appointments. Let me have a staff report.
Did you want to go back to 8.1, or did you want to...
Oh, are we? It's up to you. I thought we were going to do that on a different night.
No, the audit's going to be on a different night.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. 8.1.
We're happy to take up 8.1.
8.1, Midyear Financial Review.
So we spent, we spent an hour on 10 grand and we'll spend a few minutes on 15 mil.
Is this the whole packet, is this one, or is there some online?
There's that, and then you had a report that had a printout of the ledger, year-to-date ledger. So it would have more detail of where we are in different accounts. So Finance Director Kathy Warms is going to walk you through a brief overview of the status of the general fund, and then I have a couple of comments, and then we'll be available for a discussion.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Tonight, I am presenting where we stand mid-year as of December 31st, 2017, as we move into the new year. Right off the bat, the good news is, is that we are right where we should be. So this should be a very sweet little presentation. Economic update, our agenda for tonight, general fund overview, budget challenges, and council discussions and questions, as normal. Economic update, what I find is interesting is that our unemployment rate, US-wide, continues to slightly... Nope. Slightly decline, it continues to decline very slightly by .02% through September. I got the information I received from Muni, and what I could find is just through September. And then again, the home sales for California miraculously just continue to grow. So good for us because we are a property tax-rich city, so... And then the median price is, we're expected to grow year-over-year up to 7.2%. That's just, I know, it is, it's kind of hard. I always have a hard time budgeting property tax because it's been so good, and I am learning to trust what the county gives us for projections. On the other hand, the bad side of the property taxes going up is the California burden, which is they're now calling because more than half of the renters are paying more than 30% of their income towards rent alone. So that means they have less money to spend in other goods and services, and it makes it really hard. So I think at some point, we're going to find a tipping point in our housing economy somewhere. I don't know what it is. I don't know what it'll look like, but it can't continue at some point. And I gave you the detail from the Muni reports and from the California Department of Bulletin in the, and part of your packet with the slides. The next slide is our general fund revenues. This is kind of like a snapshot of where, what we budgeted, where we are. I have, we can, we're right on track. You can see that we, we have collected our December property tax, so this is good. Sales tax is coming from the state, always a couple months behind, so we're kind of right where we should be. Other taxes is business license, TOT, and property tax transfers. Business license really hasn't started hitting yet. It's just beginning. They're kind of due at the beginning of February, so we should see a big influx in the next couple months. We can also see from our license and, or, I'm sorry, not our license, the, I want to go down to the penalties, penalties, no, sorry. I can't see across street. Shouldn't be looking up there, I should be looking down here. The use of money in property is our investment income. So we invest in, mainly in Cal Trust and LEAF, and that has done better than expected because we're only halfway through the year. So that's, means that our interest rates are up, our investments are up. And then our charges for services would be reflective of our new rate study that we put in place and our new rate, so this is a good thing. Lastly, on their other agencies, I can show you in detail a little more. This would be, most of that is when we do the mutual aid for fire and they receive state funding. When we receive the state funding, we also pay other agencies out of there for their portion of what we might have received because we're all kind of blended right now. So it's a timing issue of paying out an agency for a future payment from last year. A little more detailed look at our revenues. There's really, again, we're at 51.9% remaining to collect, so we're right on track. The other agencies, I know it'll turn around once we get our other funding in, and there's not a whole lot to say. Just to look at the picture where we are, property tax-heavy, followed by sales tax. Moving right into the general fund slide, again, I have to say, you know, through the budget process, we talked about the long-term financial recovery plan, and part of that is cost recovery, and every department has shown that we are, we are controlling our costs, and they're watching their budgets. Now, true, you know, recreation is a little bit heavier in the summer months as its public works in their parks, they're going to be doing a lot more come the spring after, they have a lot more mowing. But everybody is right on track, and if they are a little, you know, percent remaining, more than 50%, they usually will catch up towards the end of the year. But this is a great story because we're right on track with where we are.
Can I just interject really quick, Kathy? The one area we're not sure of is our exposure on claims against the city that relate to the floods and, that we had. Although we were very fortunate, this time around, there wasn't significant issue, there weren't significant issues. We do have a handful of claims, and it's unclear to us if they'll resolve in this fiscal year and the next fiscal year. If they're in the next fiscal year, we can budget properly for them. If they settle out in this fiscal year, then we'll bear those costs and they won't have been budgeted. We will have the cash to settle out our claims. And this is mostly private property damage where there's been demonstrated to have been a public infrastructure issue that contributed to the damage.
Two pieces I want to point out. One, the library has increased their budget by 27, 26, $2,726 from the interest of the Zimmer money that came in, so they were able to use that money for part of their budget. And then we, council had approved $30,000 contract for BMI for imaging. That has been put into the planning budget, so the planning budget has increased by that $30,000. That reserve was passed a while ago. So those two pieces are incorporated into the new budget line items.
So this is actually, I think, for the first time in years, we have less than six figures in adjustment to expenditures at mid-year. That's a testament to the department heads having held the line really well, having done a good job of projecting what their needs would be. The imaging contract is a project that, once we had hired a new city clerk, I had asked her to, to go out and get bids, and that, we hadn't planned for that in the budget, but it's going to pay off in dividends, we can get rid of all this paper, and the data will be more accessible to public, so, big return.
Kathy, how much did you give from the Zimmer trust to the library?
$2,726, I believe, or 26...
Okay.
2767.
Okay.
That's your adopted policy. That's the interest that returned on the first year. That, and two points is that wasn't a full year of, we didn't have the money for a full year. The second thing is, we were waiting for the Zimmer trust to close. You'll recall, I reported out it had finally closed, and we have the last payment. So Kathy has been investing the money per your investment policy and into vehicles that will reduce liquidity but increase returns. And so the way your policy's set up for now is we're trying to generate interest that can be spent on one-time purchases. So we think we'll actually see a healthier, much, much healthier return at the end of this fiscal year.
Great. One other point I want to mention is the general fund policy recalls us to have 25% in our general fund policy, and we have reached that. So we, we are, actually, we're over. We have approximately, I'm wearing glasses on, we have $5.2 million in our reserve fund at the time. So we're doing very well on that end, so that's very well to please out. We have expenditures going in a little more detail. You can see a little bit better than the first slide. I like the handout with the general fund as a one-pager that you can see in total that I've handed out, but this gives you a little bit better of a picture. Again, it just shows that everybody's kind of right in where they should be. I do want to point out that the citywide OPEB services is scheduled for $200,000, so we're right on track with that. Our PERS lump sum, I budgeted the full amount of PERS lump sum, including the interest if we paid month to month. So the $23,982 is a savings that we, we were able to pay. We had enough cash to pay the full year July 1st. So that is, that's money we've saved not paying PERS interest. To point out. Other than that, contract services, animal service controls, LAFCO, and pretty much, now everybody's on track.
And I just would like to add, we will probably repeat what we did last year, which is, once we know if revenues are going to come in higher than expenditures, we'll have a discussion about whether to increase something like the OPEB contribution. So we'll be able to talk to you about that in April or May because we'll have a good sense where the year's going to close out. As you can see, if this pace continues, you're going to close out with, with surplus revenue. So that will be a discussion that you can have at that time. And as you know from last year, there were two or three expenditures you were interested in directing some money to from surplus revenue.
Mid-year expenditures, police and fire are always our biggest components, safety, which is very much needed. Budget challenges, you're going to get tired of me talking about continue funding OPEB and our PERS pension costs. I mean, they're just going to continue. The PERS will, we'll have to watch closely. Dan had mentioned earlier that PERS's board is now looking at reducing the amortization rate from 30 years to 20 years. That would hurt. So we will have to see, see what happens with, how PERS is going to handle their struggles and hopefully not put them on the burden of the city.
I read, last week, I was telling City Manager about it, that CalPERS also voted to change their portfolio mix to something that would give them a lower return than what the only member who's an investment professional suggested.
Before we move on to, I wanted to make sure that, to inform the council, we are still sorting out PERS issues to complete our fire consolidation. When that happens, it's very likely there'll still be a safety liability on the books because depending on how this all plays out, most scenarios, we retain the liability for the existing retirees from the Larkspur Fire Department. So that number will drop, but it won't entirely disappear. And what'll probably happen is we'll go on a particular payment program scheduled to pay down the amounts for the existing retirees.
On another note, on the PERS note, I came across an article this week that had listed all the cities in California with their burden of PERS and what it would look like going forward in a number of years. And Larkspur is actually kind, it was like, in the, out of 241 cities is 40, in the 40th range, so not too bad, not too, not in the worst, not in the best, but right in the middle, so we're doing okay. I mean, comparatively, looking at other cities our size, we're doing all right. I mean, we're not, we're right in the mix with everybody else. Funding for the Marina Maintenance, you know, we had dredging, we had dredging over costs, so this is just something to be on the horizon. This is not going to be an ongoing, but the general fund is, does pick up extra costs for other funds. for other funds that are not, have not, have, cannot collect enough taxes on their own. And that happened last year. There's still more to come on the Marina dredging piece. I think we are in, we're still looking at the certain costs for...
Yeah, so maybe to clarify, on the first bullet, there's an A missing, so that's funding for Marina maintenance, but probably be better to say funding for Marina slash lagoon maintenance. So we collect a small tax assessment from property owners who benefit from the Larkspur, from the, the lagoon that's in the Marina neighborhood. The cost to currently maintain the system that moves water in and out of the, of the lagoon, the amount of money coming in is not keeping up with what it's costing to maintain. That's partly because we have a interim system in place that requires more manpower. We're working with the residents to come up with a long-term funding plan to put better infrastructure in place, which would then drop, hopefully, that cost down below the tax revenue. The second one, the LMFA, the Larkspur Marina Financing Authority, is responsible for dredging the channels that the folks who have docks in the Marina neighborhood use to get their boats out into Cordero Madera Creek and then out into the, oh, into the bay. That's a separate financial entity, however, the city's the treasury for LMFA. So the, the issue there is that the, when the dredging takes place, a lot of money gets spent, and then we collect assessments through the LMFA structure from the property owners to sort of build up cash to pay for the next dredge. So you build up cash, build up cash, dredge, build up cash, build up cash, dredge. This last round of dredge costs more than the cash on hand. So the way this is structured, the city's now essentially carrying, if you will, a note against LMFA, because we've covered that additional cost. And so, long-term for LMFA, this is a problem, because the first couple of years of assessment now are going to be to pay the city's coffers back. So we have to work with that, those residents to figure out a solution to their situation. And in the meantime, the city has a sum of money that is not in our treasury, because we've extended it to that situation, so.
Yeah, Dan, how often do you have to dredge?
So, we've dredged one major dredge, which was last year since I've been here, and one minor dredge in my time here. And so, I think the original vision was they would dredge about every 10 years. What they're finding is sediment buildup is accumulating faster than they'd hoped. So the, the thing that hurt us probably is the funding for the mini dredge took away cash that would have been accumulated for the 10-year dredge, but was necessary, because as regulations keep increasing, there's sort of this balance that LMFA has to deal with about what's allowable for navigable waters and what's appropriate for, for the enjoyment by the property owners. And so, I can't totally answer you, but I'm guessing we may have this sort of cycle now.
But do you have a payment plan with the LMFA?
Well, we'll actually continue to transfer the monies coming in for the next couple of years to offset this effective loan that was made. And this was all structurally created by the city, so that's why it just happens. But our, our financial advisor, Wolf Hansen, is working with us now, they help set this finance, the district up that collects the money. So we can report to the residents what's, what it's going to take to have a healthy balance going forward. So it's not something we're going to leave hanging. I think Kathy and I felt it was really important to make you aware. We did extend the treasury in an unanticipated way, we have, we had an obligation to do that contractually, so.
Councilmember Way, you had a question? All right.
And again, we also have our deferred maintenance discussion in firehouses, 15 and 16, I think, are probably up on the top of the list now that we have our windows now replaced. And then, of course, liabilities and work of comp insurance claims, those are really hard to budget for, but we do have to cover those each year. So, as again, as we go forward, we'll see, you know, where we end up.
So in previous mid-year budgets, if I recall, we also had the seismic retrofitting of City Hall. Is that not on there because it's not on there? Or is 15 and 16 firehouses?
Well, the city continues to try to obtain a grant from the state to help pay, help defray the seismic retrofit, and so it remains a challenge. I would say, probably if I pulled the Public Works Director up to the mic right now, he would express growing concern as he learns more and more in his time here about the challenges of our firehouses, to make sure that they're, they are healthy and sustainable for the long term. So I think he's transferred that concern to me, and I've subsequently transferred that concern to Kathy, and so it merited a bullet point up here. 15 is going to be the same story City Hall was, old building, but when we open it up, we don't have any clue exactly what we're going to find. 16 is, so that's a Green Bay station, 15's a downtown station. So 16, we've, it is a building that was constructed in phases, which created its own set of problems. Like a lot of property in that particular area, there's been some settling that's occurred because of the nature of the water table there. That's presenting some challenges to, to the property. And as a result, the, there are serious maintenance issues that we need to sort out so we can come to you with a proper budget request.
I could bring you back another list if you like.
We, yeah.
[laughing] I was keeping it simple, what was really important, and bringing it to the top.
I, I just know that that remains in the front concern of many of the community members, that we don't, we don't lose sight of the fact that the seismic challenges that this building has.
Okay, in my notes. That's all I have for you, because the next one is council discussion. So, like I said, pretty simple, we're doing great, right on track.
Just to add, before we turn over to you, Mr. Mayor, a couple of things that I wanted to note. I think, I've told you in the last two budget cycles, that we're trying to be extra conservative about the growth we're seeing in the economy, make sure it's, it's real, that it's permanent. At this point, I think you kind of caught from Kathy's discussion of property tax, that we're prepared to accept that our baseline moved. And so I think this year's budget discussions, our budget process that prepares us for 18, 19, we'll probably have a healthy discussion about where is our property tax base, and what, how do we budget against it? What we've done the last two cycles is, is allow those extra revenues to come in, then we've spent some of that extra revenue, and we've put some away for a rainy day. Now that we're seeing it as more of a reality, we may want to talk about whether it's appropriate to program some of that. Now, we have those debts that we're concerned about, OPEB liability, pension liability, and deferred maintenance. So I could argue, we already programmed it, and we just need to actually put that in writing. But that's probably a discussion this year, because we're now, we're now going to finish our fourth cycle of healthy gains in property tax that I think we can still conservatively budget against, but now consider to be the real number. Sales tax is not growing as robustly as it was a few years ago, but it's remained very sound and solid. We've also, would note, we've had a couple of large changes in terms of some of the retail outlets that are, particularly in the Bonner Shopping Centers, it went through its remodels. So until everything comes back online, it's, it's difficult to fully assess where we're going to land on sales tax. Marine Country Mart also, I think, from some discussions with those folks, they're expecting a little more change in their mix over the next year or two, so we may see some gains again as, as those mixes take hold.
Any council discussion, councilmember Chu?
Probably less discussion, more question for staff. You know, we saw in the audit that the portfolio mix for CalPERS over the next 10-plus years, which is as far as they go, is well below the current discount rate. So I, I would think that even though they've only announced discount rate reductions down to 7%, that we can pretty much expect another one after that. So I, I would think it would be harder to try and program new stuff in when we can almost calculate exactly what our future annual required contributions are going to be. So, I mean, would you kind of broadly agree with that assessment? Or have any thoughts on it?
I would actually strongly agree with that. I think part of the discussion as we go through our budget cycle will be, what do we need to program to cover, cover our PERS, what we anticipate to be our PERS costs? The other thing we're exploring, a lot of cities are looking at now, is with the economy having been strong, and cities having been able to rebuild reserves and take a look at their issues, is there any way to make use of money through investment vehicles and other options to maybe capture some returns while we have that money that we can use to offset some of the costs that we're going to see from PERS? One of our challenges, you'll recall, is we need liquidity to manage the bridge project. So at the end of the day, we can't necessarily tie up too much of our, of our cash, because it needs to be available to us to, to front the costs on the bridge. I've said it many times before, but for the benefit of anybody new listening, we pay the bills, when the bridge gets going, we're going to pay the bills, and then we get paid back. And so, we anticipate periods where we could have as much as $2 million out paid to invoices and waiting for reimbursement, so.
Good, thank you.
Are there councilmember questions or comments? Councilmember Harrow?
Just two questions. When's GOTS going to start operating? [laughing] Speaking of sales tax revenues associated with Bonner Shopping Center.
Yeah, I, I think that they probably are a little behind based on the last bit of information I had, but, because I, I had done an impression, they were hoping for a grand opening toward the end of this month, beginning of next month, but I don't, I don't know for certain.
They don't look ready.
Yeah, I think they probably are a little bit behind, the rain's probably not helping them now, so.
Yeah, that was it. There's going to be more burger places coming up in Marin over the next year than we can count.
All right, other comments or questions on the budget review? Are we going to go to our capital improvement project, our program next?
We do, and Julian Skinner, Public Works Director, is here to give you an update on our capital improvement plan.
Welcome. Yeah, thank you very much, Kathy.
Here's our fancy new... Good job. Even has a laser.
Good evening, membership council, and members of public, Julian Skinner, Public Works Director. We have a quick recap. Who do you think...
Julian Skinner, Public Works Director. We have a quick recap of the city's capital program at the midpoint of the year. So the agenda for tonight, just have a brief overview of the capital improvement program, which includes some new projects, some carryover projects, and then also some amendments that we've gone through since adoption of the budget. There's no actual action required of you tonight, this is just an update. There was some action to do with the amendments that you took as part of the consent item earlier this evening. So this is the capital program that was adopted on June 7th of last year for the fiscal year that started July 1st of last year and continues through to June 30th of 2018. It included eight new projects, so projects that we were undertaking for the first time in 1718, and then 13 carryover projects, which are projects that were started in previous fiscal years and then carried over because they were not complete into the current fiscal year. We break our projects down into categories of buildings, parks, and projects, the majority of the projects are streets and utilities, 16 of the 21 projects. And then just an overview that we present every year when we do the capital program that shows the kind of things that we're responsible for maintaining, improving, and replacing when they come to the end of their useful life. Some of the major items on there are the 32 miles of pavement that you've all heard about, that will be going through a five-year plan, and then the 15 miles of storm drain that we're also looking at as part of the storm drain master plan. So quickly, in the buildings projects, so the only building program that we had was an investigation of Fire Station 16, so this is the Green Bay Fire Station, and this year you funded, just doing some initial reports to quantify some of the water intrusion and to try and identify ways to remedy that at the station. And so, that study, the initial study, has been complete, that has identified the source of the water intrusion, and so now we're working with an architect to take that information from where the water's coming from and develop a plan for how to correct that. So as part of next year's capital program, you'll see a follow-up program for potentially designing the improvements to address that. If we look at the parks projects, there were four new parks projects this year. For the most part, they were not construction, but they were just undertaking the projects, doing some of the project development. One is the mini parks signs that you heard about earlier tonight, so that was just funded for the project development, getting the community feedback and getting some options out there for what the signs could look like. Again, as part of next year's capital program, you may see some funding requests for installing some of those signs after the program is developed. And then kicking off some improvements at Niven Park, resurfacing the tennis court and Piper Park volleyball courts, all projects that are started behind the scenes, but not actually any construction slated for this fiscal year. So again, you'll see a continuation of those in next year's budget. You saw four new streets projects in this year's capital program, Magnolia, Madrone Intersection improvements. So that's one of the components of next week's workshop that the city manager spoke about earlier. Next Thursday's workshop will talk about these proposed improvements on Magnolia. It's actually being combined with another project. So this was a grant awarded to the city for improving the pedestrian crossing at Madrone and Magnolia. So we've started some conceptual design, and we'll be sharing that with the public next Thursday. Hopefully, that project will be under construction this summer. Again, we try to get the bulk of our projects that are very traffic-intensive done when schools out, so that the traffic is less of an issue for the construction. Doherty Bridge mitigation, this is an ongoing non-construction project that's a federally required five-year monitoring after we complete a project, and we have mitigation measures as part of the environmental document. We have to go and monitor the plants and see which plant survived through a five-year process. Doherty Drive, this is a project that would underground the overhead utilities on the remaining portions of Doherty that still have overhead. That project is purely driven by PG&E schedule, which unfortunately, it looks like it has slipped out another year. So it's in PG&E's queue, it has not been designed yet, it needs to get through design, and then they put it through construction. So it's probably still about two years out until we'll actually see some construction there. And then local streets pavements, so this is the streets that we proposed to pave this summer. We've been meeting with the consultant, the design is almost complete. It should be going out to bid in a couple of months, and then, as usual, try and get those streets paved over the summer. We have worked with PG&E to add some streets to the project that they're going to be doing gas main replacements on, and then got an in-luf fee from PG&E to add into the project funding for that. These are the carryover projects, that's the long list, I'll just drill down on some of the bigger projects. So local streets, this was last year's paving project, we did close that project out last year. Final cost was just over $1.6 million, came in just about 5.5% over the construction bid, so within a 10% contingency allowance. And in total, last year, we placed almost 5,000 tons of asphalt and repaved 2.5 miles of streets. Citywide storm drain repairs, we've been plugging away at the storm drain master plan in an effort to be able to present that to you as part of the CIP budget this year. We've completed a couple of small repairs already, one up on Redwood Avenue where we had a sinkhole due to a storm drain failure. We replaced a couple of sections of storm drain there, and then also via Shapiro, we had an overland storm drain that was not functioning, and the water was spilling out overland. This is a photo of that drain, the... The green is the storm drain pipe, and what looks like a tree next to it is actually a mass of roots that was pulled out of that pipe, and that's why it was not working properly. The pipe was completely full of roots, there was no room for the water to get through, so. Another storm drain project, Cordelejo, this is up in the Green Bay Hills. We went out to bid with this project in the fall, the engineer's estimate was 880,000, and we thought it was our lucky day, we got a low bid that was close to the engineer's estimate, but that contractor withdrew his bid, said he made a mistake, so. And unfortunately, the second low bidder was too far away for us to move on to the second low bidder. So we'll be regrouping that project and potentially going out to bid again this spring, or maybe combining it with a paving project to try and get some economies of scale for that project. Some small miscellaneous projects that we have funding for, that we kind of put in on an annual basis, is for miscellaneous bike and ped improvements and then public stairs improvements. This is for ADA ramps and minor path improvements that are not part of a bigger project, so you may have seen a small signal change at the intersection of Doherty and Magnolia. We had a couple of requests about the signal there, so we did some re-timing and put some signs up to improve the pedestrian crossing there. We've got a couple of small path improvements that we'll do, and we've got a bid out for fixing the railing on a path over at Madrone and Walnut. Magnolia ADA improvements, so this is the section that would be downtown from Post to King that we have a consultant working on. They have completed the fieldwork, which is basically a 3D model. It's hard to tell in this photo, but that's a screenshot of the 3D model that their survey instrument captured. Because of the ADA guidelines and rules are so precise as far as the slopes that are allowable, this 3D model basically captures everything in that corridor so that we don't have to keep going out and measuring this curb and that curb. Often, if you're doing a survey for ADA improvements, you have to make sure you don't have the 2% in every single direction, takes a lot of measurements. This generates a 3D model so that you can just get in the computer and you can tell what the slopes are. So that's the first step. From this model, they're developing a couple of concepts for how to address all the ADA barriers in the downtown, and then probably in about two months or so, they'll be presenting those concept plans to the public in a form of a workshop. And so we have funded just this preliminary analysis and preliminary design. There would be a future funding request as part of next year's capital project to move forward with the improvements required in that corridor. Doherty Drive, this is another project that we've had out to bid that came in above the engineer's estimate. And again, it's improvements along Doherty in front of Redwood High School, another project that ideally we would be under construction during the summer break for schools. So the proposal at the moment is to move forward with the Magnolia pedestrian crossing improvements and combine that work with this project to create a larger project to try and get some better bids, and put one project out over the summer that would have all of those components in it. The Rose Lane multi-use path, we'll be coming back to you shortly. We've redone the appraisal and the offer package, and so that is to complete that concrete path that was built through Rose Lane through to the old railway tracks. Hillview, like the Magnolia project, the field surveying has been completed, and now the consultant is working on the concept designs. That project is partly funded with Flood Zone 9, so the funding is approved right now through to concept design, so once we get through that in the spring, we'll want to move on to detailed design so that we can move that project forward, and that'll require us going back to the flood zone and requesting the next allotment of money from them.
Can I just ask you? I don't know where that is.
Yeah.
Can you just describe to me where the drain goes for that?
For Hillview?
Yeah.
So this is the...
Under Dan's house, but...
Yeah.
Oh, Hillview.
Hillview Gardens.
I'm thinking Heather Gardens for some reason. It's Hillview Gardens. Pardon me, I know where that goes.
Okay.
Yeah.
This next project, the Bonner Bridge, and then the five associated mitigation projects. So the bid is out again for the bridge project, they're actually due on the 30th of this month. We have 16 contractors that have taken plans out, doesn't mean we're going to have 16 who bid. We had about 10 last year that attended the pre-construction conference, so we have a few more, but we definitely have our fingers crossed. And so those bids are due on the 30th, we're getting a lot of questions as we get closer to bid date, so feeling good that some of the contractors are going to follow through and submit bids. And then when we get a contractor on board, then we'll be moving forward with the mitigation projects, they'll probably start the year after. So that's it for the carryover projects, these are some of the amendments that have taken place since the budget was adopted the first, in July, you first heard about the access improvements to the Richmond-San Rafael Bridge, that is under construction right now. And then the next three are ones that were part of the amendment that you adopted as part of the consent calendar earlier on tonight via Lacoon B slide. More pedestrian improvements on Magnolia and the Measure B five-year paving program, so access improvements to Richmond Bridge. I was actually out there for about three hours this morning, walking up and down, marking out areas of pavement that we're going to fix with that project. They are finished with the widening, but now they're doing the new median islands down towards Remlar Park. Then they'll be moving back and doing some improvements at the Ferry intersection, and then also putting some interconnect, some signal conduit in so that in the future, the signals that we have by Larkspur Landing Circle can talk to the signals on Sir Francis Drake by Bonner and then all the way into Ross. That project is funded completely by TAM Measure A funds. So this is a new project, Vila Cumbre Slide Repair, so this is where we experienced a slide last year in the Green Bay Hills, was temporarily covered with, we had some emergency repairs out there, we took the bulk of the soil off that could slide further, but there are permanent repairs that are needed out there. Both last winter and again this winter, we have plastic over the slope to try and keep the water out of that hillside so it doesn't slide anymore. Not a permanent solution at all. We're working with FEMA to try and get funding for doing a permanent repair there. At this point, we feel we need to move forward with doing the engineering and get a better idea on the cost of what those permanent repairs would be, so we funded the initial project development to design what these improvements would be. We've left the funding for the actual construction work unfunded at the moment until we find out from FEMA if we're going to get money from them or not. The next project is another grant award, so similar to crosswalk improvements at Madrone and Magnolia that I spoke about earlier, we did get another TDA grant this year for crosswalk improvements at the Lark Theater, so at Post in Magnolia, similar to what we proposed to do at Madrone, which is the flashing lights to enhance that crosswalk. This grant also included improving the bike path that goes next to the gas station, so between Doherty and Post. And then if we can stretch the funding far enough, we're going to fix the driveway, the back driveway into the shopping center where cars bottom out, and it's kind of an awkward pedestrian crossing because it's kind of at a skewed angle. So these improvements will be included in the workshop next Thursday, we'll be talking about these improvements and the improvements at Madrone. And again, after the workshop, our consultants will go and work on a design, and the hope is to package this together with the Safe Routes project and get it under construction this summer. And then the last project is, we created a CIP for doing the Measure B five-year paving plan. So the amount of work that it's going to take to put that five-year plan together is beyond what we can accommodate in the operating budget, so we've carved out CIP project for it. And so myself and Alvin Tan from our engineering staff have been out walking the streets, surveying, making sure the numbers we have in the reports match what the actual field conditions are, compile all that information, work with our consultant, PEI, to develop the strategies, come up with the funding, and then put some streets to years together to develop the five-year plan. And we have a couple of workshops, probably about a four-month process to get through this. I don't know that we finalize the date, but early February, we'll have a public workshop where we'll be looking for feedback from the public. We'll also share with them how we're going to go about the five-year plan, and then we'll have another touch point with the public later on, where we think we've got a draft of the five-year and what it looks like. And then ultimately, we'll come back to the council for adoption. So that's it for the mid-year update on the capital program, I'm available for any questions.
Can you return to the East Sir Francis Drake? Well, you don't have to return to that, just the timing-wise, you said that the pavement part had been done and now, and the only reason why I ask is that Moran IJ reported recently that the third lane is going to open the end of February?
Yes, so...
On the bridge?
Right. So there are a number of components to the East Sir Francis Drake project, one of them and the one that was the priority for us was doing the lane widening, so pushing that lane merge out towards San Quentin was the first order of work. That's really the most bang for your buck for what we're doing out there, and so we wanted to do that first so that when the third lane on the bridge is open, we can, within a week, get our traffic onto the two lanes.
Okay.
Right now, it's paved for the two lanes, but we haven't opened it up because they're using one of those lanes to make it more efficient to build the islands in the center.
I see.
As soon as we hear that the third lane on the bridge is open, we are going to make sure that we're not the bottleneck and we have that flow-through. We'll still have work to do back at the Larkspur Landing intersection and doing the interconnect duct, but we really want to make sure that our lane merge is open on the third lane. And yeah, we're hearing mid to late February, so we're, yeah, the weather's, you know, being a bit of an issue right now with some of the work that they're doing, but we're confident that we can meet that timetable.
Okay, good, that's what I was concerned about. I went to a luncheon on Wednesday, and Diane Steinhauser gave a whole hour and a half presentation, and that leapt to my brain that they're hoping it opens in the end of February.
Yep.
Go ahead, okay, that's it.
Other council member questions? Thank you, Julian.
Thank you.
As we transition to the next item, I wanted to share with the council that I attended the most recent library board meeting, and I was asked if staff was committed to moving the project on Rose Lane along, and I said, well, while we're committed, I wasn't sure that 2018 was a great year for Julian Skinner or Dan Schwartz to invest a ton of time in the project, and you can see why Julian doesn't necessarily have the capacity to get too immersed in the design of the library this year. He has a very, very full plate. 2018's going to be probably the busiest infrastructure year since I've been in Larkspur, so we're going to try to keep him sane.
Seems pretty sane now.
Keep him that way.
It's only January. All right.
All right. City Council Committee Appointments, Item 8.3.
The appointments are ultimately the decision of the mayor, it's our practice to bring them to the whole council for confirmation and any discussion. Mayor Hillmer provided me with a couple of changes to the list, as you see it, I also added some assignments that have come online on the ad hoc list since last year. So this is really the council's item to discuss the list and confirm it, and we'll start notifying the various entities of any changes.
Questions of the city manager on this item? Do you need an action?
This is one of the big, big... They're the city, they are the mayor's appointments, so this is an opportunity for discussion. If there's no, I think that probably, it doesn't hurt to have verbal assent from the council, but ultimately, it's the mayor's decision.
I'm assuming I caught everything everybody wanted, if not, let's do it.
I just noticed that the Twin Cities Disaster Prepariness Committee has changed our meeting dates, so I didn't notice that till now, but it meets the second Monday of the month. Maybe we better make that change if this is going to be...
Okay.
It's the second Monday of the month, it's the MPA.
So noted.
Okay, that's the only one I saw.
Any other comments, questions? Want a motion to adopt the committee appointment list?
Sure.
I'll make that motion.
There's been a motion.
Second.
Your second, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Let's see. General Plan Committee Update.
I see that Planning and Building Director Neil Toft has joined us, so I will look to him to do our next presentation. As he's calling up the presentation, I want to note for the benefit of anyone watching, the council tonight approved and authorized some support staff in terms of professional services to get the general plan update moving along. We appreciate that. After having done a pretty thorough assessment, we realized that the full update process was beyond our internal capacity to take care of, so thank you for that.
Okay, thank you, city council members, Mayor Hillmer and members of the city council. This is, I'm Neil Toft, Planning Director, and I'm speaking not just to you, but to members of the public, we'll be putting this presentation on our website for reference. So first thing I wanted to do was just again, give a little bit of background, make sure I'm doing this correctly. Oh, there we go.
What time is our meeting on Saturday?
Yeah, 8:30. I asked the same thing, 8:30 to 8:30.
Technical challenge, okay.
They didn't give us the time.
And I know you've had a long meeting, so I'll try to run through this, but again, I do want to be informative for anyone who's watching or may want to review this at a later time. So in 2010, the draft general plan update began under the direction of the Citizens' Advisory Committee, the CAC, which was appointed by the city council, and that's a process that produced a draft document of the general plan. Several elements were fairly well-completed, it was a long process. The draft was set aside while the city engaged in the smart station area plan, which would eventually inform the general plan update. Ultimately, the city council chose not to adopt the station area plan, and that did in fact inform a position to maintain densities in those areas as they are. And following that decision, it was necessary for the city to focus on several key planning processes, including recertification of the city's housing element before returning to the general plan update. We are now ready to resume the update process, and as city manager Schwartz indicated, with some help from consultants, particularly technical aspects of updating the traffic, getting our level of service figures in order, those will be important to finalizing the general plan and particularly the circulation element. Earlier this year, a steering committee comprised of two city council members and two planning commissioners were appointed to assist staff in refining and finalizing the draft general plan. We've put out a schedule where we will be holding a series of study session meetings with the steering committee, and we will also be conducting a few public workshops on very specific topics. And although the goals, policies, and action programs for the general plan update were largely completed by the Citizens Advisory Committee, there remain several matters that will have to be further evaluated by the steering committee. Specifically, it is the charge of the steering committee to provide feedback on the draft and outstanding issues through the lens of elected and appointed officials who work and engage in these processes on a regular basis. In the study sessions, we will be asking the steering committee to review the updated conditions since the original draft and/or new mandates that have come into place under state law, and to consider updated policies and/or options for addressing such changes, and to assist us in reviewing the final language, the graphics, the figures, and the tables that we will be presenting in the... that we will be presenting in this process to finalize the draft. In advance of steering committee meetings, staff will be providing topical reading materials, including related plans and documents to consider, and a list of guiding questions and policy options to consider. In some cases, staff may propose language based upon overriding themes and goals cited by the Citizens Advisory Committee. It will be incumbent on the steering committee to review the materials and be prepared to discuss and provide policy direction for staff to include in the draft general plan update. Responsibilities for both staff and the steering committee are laid out in a process of the attached operating guidelines and procedures, which were included in the message we sent out earlier this week. This schedule is intended to provide a defined work program to refine the document and conclude preparation of the draft general plan update in a timely and efficient manner. Given our limited budget for continued work, it's imperative to remain on schedule in order to successfully complete the general plan update this year. It is not intended that the study session provide a comprehensive review and comprehensive reconsideration of the goals, policies, and programs of the draft elements prepared through the CAC process. Now, I'll quickly run through the schedule, and that was attached, and I'll just kind of run through this fairly quickly. I won't go into each meeting in detail, but we do plan to have a kickoff meeting in early February. That'll be a general introduction. And one thing we will be discussing is one of the advantages of the delay we've had is we can establish a new 20-year time horizon for the general plan, assuming it's updated in 2019, 2020. That can be a time horizon out to 2040. Another study session will be on the land use element. We'll review that relative to our updated housing element and the sea level rise vulnerability assessment, and we'll also be discussing potential, specific plan for North Magnolia Avenue. Other study sessions will be on the optional elements. We'll be looking to potentially integrate sustainability and GHD reduction and economic development goals into the draft. And in March, the traffic consultant, excuse me, the traffic consultant will be conducting roadway and intersection counts. This is a, really a prime time of year to do intersection and roadway counts, and that will help inform us later in the year as we begin reviewing the circulation element. So in April, May, we will have a public workshop on the health and safety element and the noise element. We will have a study session with the steering committee on the public health and safety element following that, and we will begin a study session on the circulation element. We'll be updating both local and regional traffic improvements that have occurred since the draft. We'll review our traffic limits and circulation policies of the smart station area plan, and we will be reviewing LOS standards and VMT, or vehicle miles traveled thresholds as required under state law. And I need to keep this up. There we go. That's where we were. In June and July, we will be conducting a study session on community facilities and services. We'll be updating our existing conditions and future needs and considering further shared services opportunities and integrating the 2050 plan into the draft update. We will hold a study session on community character and a study session on natural environment and resources. Later in the year, we will be conducting a public workshop on community character, natural environment, and resources, and eventually have a final study session on the land use element and all the final maps and the graphics, and that should get us towards completion of the general plan update. In terms of public outreach and participation, we are planning three public workshops in the schedule. The public is encouraged to attend the study session meetings. However, these are really intended to be a focus of the steering committee providing direction to staff, but it's certainly worthwhile to have people attend and be informed. We will also be updating the webpage to provide detailed background information, meeting materials, and topics, and related documents and plans. The public can sign up for email notifications on our general plan update calendar, and it's linked on our webpage. And one thing on that is we have, in fact, been updating it, and we're prepared to show it to you, but I don't think it's something we have to walk through tonight, but we'll be fully rolling it out early next week. And it's something we're populating with links and reference materials that will come in, come into play during particular study sessions and meetings. Staff will also report out updates to the city council and the planning commission at regular meetings, and the steering committee members can also report progress at their respective meetings as well. So with that, one thing again, I do want to note appreciation for authorizing the contracts this evening. I think that's going to help us to get this moving forward and hopefully provide you with some more dynamic graphics in our presentations in the future on this matter. Do you have any questions for staff?
Questions of staff from the council? Catherine Way?
So Neil, as far as for the two members of the council who will be participating on this, required reading documents and things, do you want us to give you a list of what we have and what we don't have, or should we just wait on that?
Let me double-check on that, and if you want to go ahead and send me what you have that you know is relevant. I know you have, probably have the, you know, existing 20, excuse me, 1990 general plan.
Yeah.
But if you do have a list of documents that you already have and you want to let me know, that would be fine. I'll be sending out materials and checking with you before I certainly print anything of, in volume.
Okay. And then my second question is, we had a community character workshop about two years ago, two and a half years ago, three, three full community character workshops, if you recall. Will we be using any of that material for this conversation that'll be in July about community character?
Well, I think there were some takeaways from that that can be informative, and I appreciate you bringing that up. It was, certainly there was some focus on certain areas, but I think that's something that can be informative.
I'm just trying to avoid redundancy.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
The community character element in the general plan is a description of, a physical description of the cities, neighborhoods, and districts. The update would be looking at any changes that would go into that, and then the policies that would accompany the element.
Right.
We really didn't get into that during those town hall meetings in terms of the specifics of the general plan policies. So, we might overlap in terms of qualitative descriptions, but the purpose is quite different.
Well, and I think there's, as you said, the existing general plan breaks the neighborhoods out into very specific areas and identifies those characters, and part of the discussion was how, part of the discussion will be, how does the city go about developing or looking towards design guidelines given the diversity of the neighborhoods? And I think that's going to be the tenor of the discussion.
It's really about the rules for project review as opposed to anything related to the, to the city parcel.
Other questions from the council?
Nice job.
Nice job, thank you Neil.
Okay.
One last question on the, on North Magnolia. Would we be, would that discussion include development standards?
Well, I think the discussion will be, there was a direction, the CAC kind of left some open question towards that area. There was a direction to develop a specific area plan for North Magnolia, and I think we'll want to kind of check what are the goals or the overriding themes and the purpose of developing that specific area plan.
Because we did a specific plan before that we might want to take a look and see what lessons were learned from that.
Okay.
Because there are physical constraints to the properties in that part of the city that will quickly take us to the same place the last specific plan went. We want to make sure we don't set things back. Thank you.
Okay.
Are there also, this is just my ignorance about these general plan updates, but is there other subject, are there other lines in there in regards to natural hazards, sea level rise? I see that in part four, or number four, but is there other things about resiliency in regards to wildland fires or other natural disasters other than natural hazards, sea level rise, and land use compatibility?
Well, I think that fire hazard has become, pardon the pun, a hot topic.
Yes.
And we didn't want to just throw that in there at the last minute just topically, but I think it will be a discussion as to some of the areas in the city that are very difficult to access and are more, you know, again, we have a lot of WUI standards. I think we'll go over how the WUI standards have evolved in terms of construction and so on, but we'll probably be taking a closer look at that issue as well.
So where would something like the Community Wildland Fire Protection Plan come in?
That would come in under Health and Safety.
Under that one there, okay. Because there's about five categories that Larkspur has highlighted in on that plan.
And these all, these all inform land use to some degree, but initially speaking, that would be under Health and Safety.
Okay, good. Because that'll, that's something I'm very interested in pursuing, so I'll look forward to that time.
No action needed on that item?
I don't, no, no, but you might, for the sheer exercise, ask if there's public comment. I know there's not anybody other than staff here, but...
Are there members of the public that would like to ask questions or make comments on this agenda item? Now, take your time. No rush. All right, seeing none. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Thank you Neil, it was very helpful.
Thank you.
Comprehensive. I don't think we have anything else on the agenda this evening.
You don't? I would recommend a motion to simultaneously adjourn the regular and special meeting because we didn't actually close the special meeting in the hope that our auditor would arrive.
Right. I feel the collapse.
No, I think something, signals got crossed here.
All right, we're going to witness the organizational collapse of the meeting very rapidly here. I'll entertain a motion to close the regular meeting and the special meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Do it, turn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for all the work.